Glenn said some stuff, I got a copy too. Glenn sent something, he's on the media.
Oh, he's on it.
Yeah, he's on it. And he's also on all.
He is. No, I'm not on it.
Yeah, so that's fine. Yeah. You ready? Ms. Bochamp, you ready?
Yes.
All right, we'll go ahead and... Do we have a pastor here? Carl, thank you, we'll start.
Let's pray.
Please stand.
Father, I do thank you just for the opportunity to be able to serve my city in this way. I thank you for those that are serving on the council this way. I thank you for those that are here bringing requests and discussions. We thank you that we have the ability in this democracy to do that. We give you praise for that. Father, you cared for the welfare of Babylon and Nineveh, and you still care for the cities that we live in like Bradenton. Father, I ask you that we would conduct ourselves with honor here with the same concern that we see in Scripture, that we are to outdo one another in showing honor. We are made people, we are made people in your image, and as C.S. Lewis once wrote, "We have never met a mere mortal." Lord, give us humility that we can enter into discussions with a desire to discern and leave with an ability to disagree, with respect, that conversations would be filled with grace, with gentleness and respect, so that even when decisions and disagreements and outcomes are different than we desire, that everyone can understand that they have been valued and they have been heard and listened to. Bring unity even when there's not unanimity. Lord, do this, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Join us in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'd like to thank Pastor Jeff Henderson from Harbor Community Church for the pledge there. And welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting at 8:30 a.m. on Wednesday, February 24th here in City Hall chambers. City Council chambers is open to the public. All are welcome to attend this meeting. Social distancing and screening will be enforced. Any member of the public wishing to comment may do so at this meeting. Also, anyone wishing to view supporting documents for agenda items, please contact Tamara Melton, Deputy Clerk, at 941-932-9463, or City Clerk at cityofbradenton.com. Thank you, and we'll call the meeting to order. Mrs. Bochamp?
Thank you, sir. We have no proclamations and we have no presentations this morning.
Okay, thank you. City comments, citizen comments not on the agenda. Glenn, Gibellina?
Can I get this over and on, please? Good morning, Glenn Gibellina, for the record, 711028 Street. I'll do the good, bad, and the ugly. We'll start with the, we'll start with the bad first. So, I did a request for the financial report, and I got an email this morning that they couldn't find it, they don't have it. I really don't think this meeting falls within the Sunshine laws as far as meeting those requirements. So, if we can't even get a financial affidavit of the next meeting, it's a problem. The second item, you might want to look into that, Carl.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
What are you talking about?
I'm not going to burn out my time.
What?
You're going to stop the clock?
Okay, hit the end.
Okay. So, the second thing is that I met with the school board on the 920 project, and although this council did not set the bar high enough, I have approached the school board to set the bar where it should be. So, we're requesting that if that developer wants their fees waived, that they got to make 25% of that project affordable through the Alice Report and also for 40 years from the CO. That's a good contract. Now, for the good. Chief Evans, thank you so much. We had a vacancy on our Affordable Housing Board. I reached out to Chief Evans yesterday. Within an hour, she got back with me. Within two hours, she had a candidate for us. So, thank you, chief. Outstanding job. You don't know what a shining star you have there in the department, because when she can get back to just a citizen that quick and have, and things move, I really appreciate that. So, thank you, chief. The other good news is that I sent you all my Affordable Housing, a 13-page presentation I gave to the Board of County Commissioners yesterday. It requires, it has information about impact fees and bonus densities, how to raise funds for that. So, it's 13 pages. You got any questions, let me know. The really good news is... Can you pass those out, please? I had an opportunity to visit this Pocket, a great program, Pocket Community, right down the road, talk to William and Bill. We're having an open house Friday, 1 o'clock. We'll be giving tours of these, of this great project, 700-foot square house. I don't know if there'll be cookies and coffee, but we will certainly be giving tours. So, I think we're moving in the right direction on that. And in addition, I'm on the Board of Nick Minassa, and we're looking at doing transitional housing on a 50-acre lot. We are looking at other properties. Hopefully, we might be coming to the city for some vacant property. So, again, come out Friday, 1 o'clock. There may be some special discounts for schoolteachers and police officers, hopefully with Vicki and the down payment of $20,000 and waiving the school fee of $5,000. We can take $25,000 off that $179 and really get it down to where it needs to be. This is a great project and, and good job, Carl. Good job. So, you want to ask questions on the...
Thank you, Mr. Gibellina.
The financial information you was looking for, what was that? By the way, this is 184.5.
Okay, so, as you can see on the overhead, I asked for the chairman's report, the executive records report, the financial statements, and the economic incentive agreement. I got a letter back this morning, let me know if you have any issues opening documents. Well, the only document that I can open was the agenda, and that was on the website. There's no...
Hold on, that's from the, that is from the CRA. This is not a CRA meeting. This is a council meeting.
Sorry. I'll bring it back this afternoon.
All right, thank you.
I'm out of, thank you for pointing it out.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
I'm done, thank you.
All right, I don't have any other citizen comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on non-agenda? All right, thank you. Moving on, Mrs. Bochamp?
Yes, at this point, we're asking for approval of the consent agenda items A through J.
Mr. Brown, I want to pull the item, I'm looking, I'm kind of mixed up in my meetings right now. I want to pull the item for the flow chart, the administrative...
Number C, or letter C?
Yeah, letter C.
All right, we have a, so it's a motion from you to pull C, approve the rest?
Right.
All right. Is there a second? All right, we've got a second to, for the consent agenda, A, B, and then D through J.
I'd like to pull I, because there was no contract attached, I wanted, and I'm not familiar with it, that's...
All right, so, we just, the motion is to pull C and I then? Is that, I guess if we have a motion, Mr., I've never had done that before where two different things were pulled at once. So, just each individual?
I don't know if it wants or...
Wants or?
I don't remember.
I'm not...
I think if the maker of the motion...
Maker, would you, would Patrick, Mr. Roth, you would say C and I to be pulled and seconded by Mr. Sanders?
Yes, yes.
That's the only way to do it, so. All right, so we're consent agenda approval of A, B, D, E, F, G, H, and J, with C and I being pulled for discussion. So, we have a first motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in, or we'll start in Ward 4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
And 3. So, it carries 5 to 0, so let's start with Councilman Roth on the consent agenda C.
Well, I will start off with a critiquing of, this is kind of one of the issues I have with workshops, is we had a workshop a week ago where there were six items on it. We spent about half a day. We touched on that, we talked about this a little bit, because we had a lot of agenda stuff. And then, I think at one point, there was a comment about this could be a further workshop. I don't remember what happened with that, but it's a workshop, so you don't vote on it. So, but, to be quite honest, when workshops were created by the city council, it was Bemis Smith's idea, and it was for the council to get together and share thoughts, not necessarily even for agenda items, but just to, just so we could see how each other thinks. And at the time, it was recommended they were going to be, you know, for the council, and it was going to be run by the vice mayor. That being said, they're non-voting, they're non-voting, so here we are down the road now. But what I'm concerned with is, we had a little bit of talk on this functional organizational chart, which is a complete restructuring of the city, and then, it's a week later, it's on the consent agenda. And, and to be honest, I'm not, I'm still, I have, I guess my first question is, this just came up a week ago. We've had a city administrator for, we asked Carl a question. We've had a city administrator for, what, six or seven years, and we're changing this. So, what is the need for urgency?
As I'd indicated in the workshop, this first came up in November of 2019, and at which time, the council at that time authorized us through workshop to say, yes, move ahead with this. Because of COVID, nothing happened. It was in all, for all intents, this chart with a couple of minor changes. So, rather than just bring, starting, moving forward because that had been said that that was okay, I thought it was appropriate to bring it back in the same form that it was previously, which was the workshop to discuss this, was discussed in the workshop, and I thought at the end of that workshop, it was pretty much the consensus that says, yes, go ahead. So, with that, we wanted to formalize it from city council standpoint in a meeting. So, it went on consent because I thought the issue was complete. So, it went on just saying, yes, let's formalize it, let's council, take a vote on this, and then we can start moving forward with the actions that would be necessary to implement this, as the fact that you will have a new administrator, and that was mentioned. And this is the setup that would help that new administrator and help the city function in the way it needs to function with an administrator as a significant part of the government.
And also, Councilman Roth, we had brought it up, and I agree with you on some of the concept you have with the workshops, but as we know, there's a new administration in now in the mayor's office, and I'm trying to bring up things that will positively, you know, move our city forward and bring up. We have said since day one that if you have something you want on the workshop, please email it. The emails have gone out every week from the clerk's office and through what I've asked them to do, to send out, if you have anything you want on the workshop, we're going to bring it up. I asked at the last workshop to make sure everybody keeps their Wednesday, their odd Wednesday from council meetings open, because I think that's the way we work it in the city, is to get information out there. This was asked at that meet, is there any other comments, and it will be on the next agenda. And I didn't get any comments, so I asked them to put it back on the agenda. And I think in 19, there was three of us on that council that approved that, that are still here, of course, I'm not on the council, but I thought it was important that everyone saw it. So, yes, I agree with you on some of the concept with the workshops, but I want to continue bringing things up so we cannot get bogged down in timing. And I know from others on this council, we sit on stuff a lot of times, and it takes too long to do things. So, the only way we're going to be able to do that, because these are business meetings. The workshops are for discussions about things, and, I mean, I could, we could not have any workshops, but then we'd be in the same old rut that we've been in for years of not moving things forward. And again, I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just saying, I want stuff to come up. That's, that's the administration that I ran on and I want to continue to do.
Okay, so, so first off, I was just explaining to the new people how workshops got invented. It was, it was Councilman Smith's idea. We all came in it. And I've always said that rather than having workshop, I'd rather have special meetings. And then, the other thing that, in the past, we've had meetings where you just decide to, you know, hash this information over several times. It doesn't have to be, you know, there can be discussion, time to think about it. It doesn't have to be suggestion, vote, suggestion. There's, there's, there's an opportunity to go ahead and say, well, we need more information on that. This is something where we're completely, when I see this, I mean, look, I just saw it for the first time. I've seen a lot of different flow charts, and this one here, it's new. I'm not necessarily opposed to it. The one thing I'm worried about is a, we're creating a whole nother bureaucratic envelope over here. And Mr. Brown, I do appreciate what you're doing, so you know that. I mean, I know that you're trying to operate different from the last, and I appreciate, I'm just having discussion.
No, no, and that's perfect. But that's why, I mean, maybe, you know, with, at the workshop, that's why we brought it out, and it has been discussed now for almost a year and a half, that since it came up with us. And again, maybe it's a little bit different, and I asked for some of it, because I do believe that we need to go into an IT department, because that's could be one of the most important departments we have going forward with some of the things that we have to deal with. And that's why it's for discussion. I disagree with something you just said, though, on if we, if we have to have a special meeting, that's for stuff that needs to be business oriented and worked on. Workshops are for discussing some of this and getting going through. Meetings are more for taking care of the city business and discussions. We can, we can vote in meetings, but we can't vote in workshops. So, that's a little bit difference of a thought, but it's not a, you know, again, if we need a meeting to vote on something, definitely, we can call them five days a week. You know me, I'm here.
Okay.
24/7 if we need to be.
Right. So, well, so, moving forward on this, I just have a concern about, two things. One, the biggest, the need to act is, you know, we're going to need a new city administrator. So, and so that's the motion that I want to make today, is to start that process to the, we have a search team. They're bringing to us a, a, you know, some, I've looked at the candidates for the planning director. It's taken a long time. Our planning director's been gone for a year, so we're finally going to get around to that. That's good. This topic here, and this is, and this is what, the one thing, when we get a city administrator, I don't know that this shouldn't be their decision. You know, we've, we've been operating, I mean, we did not have a city administrator, so those are the people that are new. For years and years and years, there was not a city administrator. We created one. We, in the financial crisis of 2008, '09, and '10, we created this position. And so, now at the end of this, we're changing this. I just, I just, I just worry that we're adding a level of bureaucracy that might not be needed. I don't know. This is just a topic for discussion. I don't, I don't think I really, I didn't hear that this was coming up. I mean, you know how those meetings go. I don't remember it being discussed, it's coming right up. If that's the case, then I missed that. But anyway, so, so I don't see the sense in, well, I mean, the sense, I don't, I'd like to look at this a little bit more, but really, the biggest thing that needs to happen is we need to, we need to start the process to hire an administrator. That there needs to be a, and I asked Ms. Kelly about that.
When you're going to go to Colin Benzinger, one of the discussions that talks about is, what is the setup of the government? What is this person going to do? You don't want to go to him and say, you don't know the structure of the government ahead of time. You want him, him or her to know the structure of the government that they're going to be applying for the job.
But we've had a structure that's been operating for...
How that's what this, this is setting in place, that structure.
Okay.
I mean, right, right now, you do not have a structure that works. I can tell you that. You can't have an administrator without a department. I'll tell you point blank, you're very fortunate. I understand everything that's going on within the framework. Somebody coming in from outside does not know that. I am willing to work within the parameters, like I said before, when I said in the workshops. Every time I got to get something done, I have to go to the apartment and ask them to do something for me. No future administrator should be in that position. I know the players. I can go to Sharon, I can go to Jim and say, oh, well, can you make this report up for me? You should have a group or people that work on that, going to Tamara or going out there and says, look, this is the work of the city administrator. You're asking the administrator to be responsible for all the departments. That's the way it should work. That's the way it should work.
And Mr. Roth, that's the reason that I voted for it in 2019, to move it forward. We voted for it to move that forward in a, in a little different structure, obviously, but very similar to that, because there was some other concern about how the lines went with the mayor and the city council. So, that's been corrected, obviously. It's a different administration. We got to keep reminding ourselves of that.
Right.
And I don't want to go down a path of the negativeness of stuff, the way the councils thought some of the things in the past possibly. But one of the things is, is there is not going to be an administrator that's going to walk in here and say, especially with other things going in our county with dysfunction around here, that, hey, if they're in dysfunction, why would I apply for that job? We want the best candidates. We've got to give them a structure, and then if we get them in and it looks like it needs to change, I'm for the council coming up. But if we don't have some structure going forward, you're not going to get the people to apply.
Okay, well, for starters, I don't believe, I mean, if any, if anyone is, you know, thinks I'm being dysfunctional or encouraging dysfunction or anything like that, they're wrong, and having proper discussion over...
What's happening in our county.
Okay, well, I just, sometimes when things are said, they can spill over. I'm just trying to have conversation over, over the future of the government here. And what, and so here's, here's a question I have, because it's right here in the explanation. Create staffing under city administrator effectively encompassing the remaining administrative responsibilities of clerk and treasurer. I don't, so, are we still going to have a clerk and treasurer?
Yes.
Or is that clerk and treasurer going to be the city admin?
We discussed this at the last meeting.
Why?
We said, pardon? At the last workshop, we said, we want a finance director that will be responsible for the responsibilities, the finance and the treasury side. The clerk will remain responsible for all clerk administration responsibilities, including these. That was a change that changed on this chart. You mentioned, what do we do with the city clerk? It's a charter officer. We said, it makes sense to make it the clerk slash deputy administrator. So that you still have that charter office of the clerk and their response. The only responsibilities for the clerk per charter are the records and to attend these meetings. The treasurer is added per ordinance. So, it is not a clerk treasurer that's in the charter, it is a clerk that is in our charter. So, the treasurer responsibility is added through, through Section 2 of the Code of Ordinances, and it makes sense then to say, you have a finance director. That would be a recommended change with this, would then be the ordinance change that would be necessary to affect a couple of these. One is indicating who the department heads are, and that you have a finance director and the responsibility of the finance director. Like I'd indicated at that meeting, city clerk is a small-town position. I served in it. All I would do is go to meetings and they would ask me 20 years ago, how do you get paid so much as city clerk? I said, I'm also the treasurer. Some of them had a treasurer, some of them did not. Clerk and treasurer was the jack-of-all-trades in small communities. You do everything in a small community as clerk treasurer, and that's the way they were set up. We were a small community when this charter was set up. It made perfect sense. We're talking now about a community with nearly 60,000 people, a budget of $130 million. So, I think it's time that you say, you put the responsibilities for those things in the people that are the professionals in that area. And a finance director, that's what they do. You sit there and say, a clerk, that's what they do. They all operate under the form of an administrator. The reason you see this tag out here is finance director has specific responsibilities for certain things in their department. Planning department has certain responsibilities within their department. Fire, police, public works, IT, all have things specifically they're responsible for. There are some things that are general operations that no one person in that department's responsible. You have a budget, you have records, communications. Human resources funnels through all the departments, so that's a responsibility that all the departments are affected by human resources. Parking management has just, for whatever reason, has been under the clerk treasurer forever. So, to keep it under...
I didn't know we had parking management.
Pardon? No, you have the parking response, the parkings are, is the clerk treasurer.
Oh, okay.
You know, I mean, you...
Well, you've added that, and I didn't know that we had that.
You mark all the, all the loading zones and the timing and enforcement is done by P.D.
She's been à la carte.
I was at the beginning.
What about HR? What about HR? Human resource. We've got 500 some employees, what about HR?
HR is underneath there. We have talked about...
Shouldn't that be a separate director?
It was at one point in time. It didn't fare well. So, we brought it back in under the, we had two different ones, two different times, that were department heads, and it created a lot of conflict between the departments and the HR department. And it was brought back under the veil of, of my area or a certain shared area.
We discussed that last year of opening that back up again.
Understand, and it can be, but what we, after the discussions, there was no great consensus to change that. We have talked about when people are ready for that. You know, we talk about one thing, saying the conceptual plan, that long-term plan would probably say HR would be there. Are there people that currently in your organization that fit that mold, that they're currently ready for that job or not ready for that job? I don't know 100%. But we had it, we had all those departments. We had IT as a separate department, we had HR as a separate department.
Well, let me...
Well, let me, let me go to Mrs. Barnaby.
Well, I wasn't done with my...
Okay, you're not finished, because, well, he jumped in, so I didn't know.
I'm sorry, but I just...
Yeah. So, Mr. Roth, if you...
Yeah, I just want to wrap up my thoughts on this, so, because this, but we didn't, I didn't, like I said, I didn't realize we were going to move so quick into action. So, so the finance director, the treasurer will be eliminated, and that'll be the finance director, right?
That's correct.
Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. So, the clerk's down under that. All right. So, my, my thinking on this, and, and to be quite honest, if this comes, if we do this right now, and I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm open for, I'm just airing my concerns. And, you know, I mean, if a new administrator comes in, they could certainly change it. This isn't, this isn't going to be charred, carved into granite and therefore never be so. It's not, I do think HR should be a separate department. I've always thought that. I don't want to get into details of why, but I've just, it's, it's, you know, our human resources, you know, our humans that are doing the work for us are valuable. And, and I, so that's just a thought I have. I'm not worried about...
I understand, and like I said, I was just going to indicate on that, one of the things that you need to do is there's ordinance cleanup that would need to happen with any of these things. Should you want to make the HR department a separate department, okay, at some point in time, we would need to clean up the language that the personnel director is an appointment of the mayor, because you don't have any control of the HR department right now. It is in the mayor's hands. The mayor points the personnel director by, by ordinance. You would want to clean that up.
Well, and, and I agree, and I, so, we're now into a whole nother topic.
That's what it is, unfortunately. It's probably not a good thing. That's the way you ran a town. The mayor points the police chief, the mayor points an HR director, there's not a whole lot else in a small town you need to take care of.
Well, and, and for those that weren't here, as I said, what, now we're, the charter discussion, I said all the way along, we were trying to...
That's not charter.
We were, okay, we were just, well, ordinance by ordinance in that. We just, we just opened up a can of worms, we didn't, we put some duct tape on a 1903 document that, that we didn't fix.
The most important document you can look at in the future is not the charter. It is code, Section 2 of the Code of Ordinances, Administration. There is 10 times more information in there about the way things are run in the city than in the charter. You may take things out of there and decide you want to try to add them into the charter because you think they make sense in the charter, but Section 2 of the Code of Ordinances is by far the most significant ordinance to review, determine, and you know what the beauty of that is? Two meetings that can change it.
Yeah, well, and, and once again, I, you know, having been here since 2006 and knowing Yeah. Well, and, and once again, I, I, you know, having been here since 2006 and, and knowing how we got to this point, and I think we're moving forward and all, I, we're not done yet. We're getting there. Um, I do believe that's a future discussion, a big discussion. Um, you know, we're still operating with a, you know, a 1903 document that at some point is going to have to be thoroughly dealt with. I, you know, I think everyone agreed that it always should have been a citizen's review committee. At the end of it, that's what everybody agreed on, which was how I started the conversation. But here we are now down the road. I believe that the HR should be a department head. That's, that's up for the council to decide. But the one thing that I do see is that when we're moving forward on this right now, that if, if this passes along with it, I would like, I don't know if it needs to be a separate vote or anything. I would like for us to officially vote on, or you say we have to vote on it, this process to start, a search for a city administrator.
Let's, let's get through the first part and then you can bring that up later. Councilwoman Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in, in my previous life as a not-for, not-for-profit agency administrator, um, I would have found it extremely difficult to come into any organization that did not have, and, and they were offering me a job that didn't have an organization chart. Because it needs to be clear, um, who reports to whom, when you get things going. Or if you're looking at taking a job, moving your family, taking a new position. It's, it, you need to have something that's fairly clear cut. And I understand that you started looking back at this in 2019. The COVID-19 pandemic has had ripple effects on everything. But I think it's, it's crucial that we have something to be able to give to individuals that may be looking at coming to the city, not only as a department head, but as a candidate for city administrator. So we can change this in, at any time, in two meetings. If this is, if, I mean, if, if we need to do it by ordinance, it's two meetings. If it is, if it is just the will of the council and we're not changing anything too drastic as far as, um, and bringing it into conflict with what it says in ordinances or says in charters. I think it would be in our best interest to go ahead and have something in place if we're going to start this process of looking for leadership in our community. Because as I said before, if I was offered a job and they couldn't tell me what the organization's, how it functioned, what it's, what the chart was, who reported to whom, I wouldn't walk away from that. I'd run.
Councilwoman Coker?
Yes. Um, I would actually just reiterate everything Councilwoman Barnaby just said. And also, I, I left the workshop with the same impression that there was consensus that they liked this flow chart. I don't have enough institutional background to know whatever your concerns are. Um, but I do agree. We've got to have, we've got to get the, the search started. And we, and we can't do it without having a structure in place.
Anything further? Councilwoman Coke?
Yes. Um, I agree that in order to get a person of quality, it would be great to have something in place. But there's also some times when someone is hired to make something, um, you know, to actually help start something and straighten things out. But I agree, it would be a lot more enticing if it's already in place. Carl, I had asked a question because I was concerned about if someone, if any of our employees were going to be losing their jobs. And you assured me that's not, is this creating any new positions?
It's creating a position of finance director where we have an accounting manager now.
In that person?
That person is here. Whether they want to apply for the additional responsibilities associated with the finance director will be kind of up to them.
So we're not-
There's still a role for that accounting manager within the department. It's just not, it's saying, what is, that's why I said there's some additional cost associated with this. It is not revenue or expense neutral. That's why I said that. Every place else is, it is, IT is, you have a manager there as well. That's responsible for that department, but now is responsible through the clerk treasurer's office. That's the only thing. Like I said, they've gone back and forth. IT has set out there. Chris is by far the most reactive to the needs of the city. Most looking out for the city of anybody we've had. Uh, we've had some, if you were here, we had some little infighting that went on between the IT department and the, a couple of the other departments in the past. And, and what happens is when they start getting the feel as a department director that you have to do what I say because I'm the department director, even though you're the director of your department and my stuff flows through you, you had the IT department trying to tell PD and fire what they had to do. Instead of making recommendations to them. And it created a lot of issues here. It's not anybody that's currently here. It just created a lot of issues. And it was felt like by the administration then that we need to bring that back under the umbrella of somebody who could make sure that policies like that weren't dictated, they were collaborative efforts between, between the various departments. And, and it got to be that if it was going to have to be that way, the person decided they couldn't work that way and left. So it, it, I mean, right now, we have a lot of things in our department that were set up by an IT director. The planning department was not set up by, the planning department, it was set up by the IT director. UB was a lot of it was set up by the, by the IT director rather than the needs of the, the utility billing department. I know better what you need than you do. Therefore, this is the way it's going to be. And that created a lot of issues. They may well know that, but they were not able to communicate that to the people in, in the way that made a collaborative work effort. A lot of that was the same way in HR. That was, those were the issues that came about. And when those people left, we said, maybe it doesn't make sense to have them sitting out there on their own because we weren't getting the cooperation that we thought was going to be necessary in this type of environment. Where you don't have, we didn't have a manager and we don't have a strong mayor that can ultimately say that. So where did that, where did you get the answers to that headbutting that happened?
Councilman Sanders? Oh, I'm sorry. Can I finish?
I'm sorry. Just one more quick. So there, none of these positions that would be kind of created are positions that we'd have to put out a search for someone. It's other than-
Finance director, we would advertise for. Yes, we would.
And city administrator.
And administrator.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilman Sanders?
And deputy administrator.
No, not deputy administrator. Deputy administrator-
We should always-
Is staying as the clerk, is staying with the clerk responsibilities. As I explained in the last meeting, a deputy administrator-
Isn't that creating a dual role?
That is a-
Which is illegal?
No. No.
It's not?
No. You can't hold two offices, having a dual role with employees.
Two offices?
No.
You're an employee and then a clerk?
No. No, that's your responsibility as an employee. And once it's designated as you an employee, you can have five different responsibilities. I could sit on five, I could sit on a police pension board. I could sit on the fire pension board. And I could be the administrator-
But those are unpaid positions.
As my responsibility.
Those are unpaid positions.
But they're officers of the state of Florida. They are defined as officers of the state because of the fiduciary responsibility. The prohibition tops about being an officer of the state. You can't hold dual office. But if it's part of your responsibilities as assigned, then you can. I could sit, Mr. Brown knows, we sat on the pension board at the same time. I had to get off the pension board because I couldn't be the clerk treasurer and sit on the pension board. It was brought up at an, at a convention that you couldn't do that. And the job you would have to give up would be your clerk treasurer's job, your paying job, just to sit as a fiduciary on the pension board. But if the clerk treasurer in, in our setup, in the pension setup, it said, the clerk treasurer will sit as a member of the board, then you can do it. But having multiple responsibilities as an employee is, is not an issue.
Yes, sir. Mr. Roth?
I'm sorry. Um-
I'm not done, but go ahead.
Well, I, I think, I think an explanation, because I, I've seen that before and it's, I, I think it's confusing dual office holders. And I, I wasn't sure whether it was elected officials-
We have to check it all the time on our boards. Saying, is it a fiduciary board or is it just some advisory board, whether you can sit on multiple boards or not?
All I was going to suggest is, as a way of clearing that up for the, anyone that's confused by that, is maybe someone could send out a document explaining that. Cause it is kind of confusing what, what that means. I mean, that's-
The dual office holder?
Yeah, yeah. How, how that, how that pertains to, um, I've seen it before. I've always thought it was elected officials. But I think it goes beyond that.
It goes beyond elected officials.
Okay. But that's, that's just a suggestion.
Okay. Um, I'm going to start from the beginning, which was last Wednesday, we were given a workshop agenda. And it had the proposed organizational chart on there. I had no attached documents. And so the, um, this was handed out during the meeting. So I didn't have, I'm complaining a little bit. I didn't have ample opportunity to absorb this prior to the meeting. That's always a problem with me. Uh, and it, it's, it becomes a, a, a trust factor that why am I not getting documents prior to the meeting? So I can absorb it, think about it. Cause I don't like quick decisions. Cause generally, quick decisions are not good decisions. Or that's been my experience in my lifetime. So I didn't make any, we can't vote in a workshop, so there was no consensus. I don't know where that's coming from. You don't have a consensus in workshop. If you do, you're violation. Well, you're in violation then-
You absolutely can stake a straw poll in a workshop. It doesn't have meaning.
Then we might as well make it a meeting.
I know. I'm saying, but you can gain consensus from a workshop. People can say, I like this. I can't vote it into action. You can even have straw polls. It's in, it's in sunshine. You can do those things.
Fine. You, you think that. I will just agree to disagree. So the very next day, you gave me a proposal with a, um, creating a new department and a new, and a, and a high level expensive job and with a hundred thousand dollar budget. And, and in the workshop, I was like, wait a minute. I can't get a sidewalk, uh, done at 75,000. And you're giving away a hundred thousand dollars for new executives. And we're in a pandemic. We've had a tooth percent reduction in, in revenue. And the median age here, or median wage in, in this county and city is about 40 grand. I just think it's, uh, obviously, I'm not going to vote for this because of the way it was done. That's number one. I don't like that. I have said that before, that things, if you ask me to vote on something quick, it's an automatic no, because I feel, uh, I don't have enough information to make a, a sound decision. I mean, there's a lot more work to do on organizational chart. And if I was an administrator, I would want to come in and hire, generally, new administrations, uh, from Washington on down. They come in and they wipe everybody out and hire all new. So if I'm going to come in as a city administrator, I want my people to do it. And I want somebody that I would either work with or professional that may have different standards or whatever. So I would say, if I was applying for administrator, I don't want you to tell me what I'm going to do. I'm going to do what I want to do because I'm now the boss.
I am glad you said that. That is perfect. Because an administrator should be able to tell the finance director that they work for them. That's the way it's set up. Should be able to tell the fire chief they work for them. They're going to hire that person. And that is not the way it happens here. That is absolutely, you guys hire that position and that makes it very difficult. Because now I am given people to work with. May not be my choice.
You administer them.
I administer them after somebody else tells them, tells me who they are. You tell me who they are.
Well, that's not-
You said just exactly right. You're not the administrator. It is, you just described it. The administrator should be able to select the people they think are going to work best for them because they're going to be responsible. I should have the ability to hire a planning director without bringing it to you.
No.
Why? You just said I should.
We'd have to change the, we'd have to-
You just said I should though. We're talking about perfect scenarios as the way things would work.
I'm talking about the position under you. You've, you've created a position, uh, under you right now that that person should be able to hire them, just like we've done in the CRA. We didn't tell her that she had to have this person or position coming in. It's her-
This is a structure that doesn't upset the entire apple cart. That's what we're trying to do.
Well, if we want to go that, what you're saying, we go to a city manager.
Absolutely. Absolutely. But, but just the way, but the way you described it is, you just said you should have the right and the ability to select the people that you needed. And I 100% agree. That is not our form of government and we deal with something different.
I was referring to the people that work directly under you in this flow chart.
And that is every director. That is every department.
Well, that's not the way your flow chart says. You got it right here.
Up at the top. Look at the top line. Those work for me.
You're administering them. You're not hiring them.
I understand that, but that is not the most efficient way to do it. The expectation is-
Well, then we should be voting on what, whether we put it on a referendum to do a city manager then, if that's what it's-
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I mean, you know, if we want to do that, that's fine. But we're, we're, this conversation is getting way out of, off of a flow chart.
If we had asked before, you had asked me before, Patrick and I have had this discussion. Mr. Brown and I have had this discussion over the years. Are we set up at some point in time to be a city manager? Can be, certainly. Absolutely. Were we one step back from that? Yes, because we needed some general oversight. We were getting big enough. We need a general oversight that this scenario was created with an administrator? Absolutely. But these things, we're just at, I am not, this is not for me, guys. If this was for me, it'd have been done five years ago. I was working with what we had trying to do that. But if we're making a change in the people that we have at the very top, then this is a recommendation. It is a recommendation.
I, I, well, that's, I, I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion that we, uh, contact our, um, selection firm that we've used for the planning director to, uh, put out a notice for a city administrator and then let that city administrator decide the flow chart once they're hired.
A motion is there, second?
I brought this up, so I have a different scenario.
So there's no second? So the motion dies for lack of a second? Oh.
She's debating.
Yeah. I'd like to see more discussion. I apologize because maybe it's my newness, but I feel like there, there's need for a little more. And maybe this isn't really the time.
If, if you're second, we can have discussion.
Second.
All right. So there is a second. It's further discussion about this?
So, so is the motion for-
The motion is to tell our, our, our select firm that we've used for the planning director to go ahead and initiate, um, selection for a city administrator and that that city administrator determine the flow chart once they're hired.
I got to make sure I fully understand this. Run it by me again.
That, that we want to, uh, put out a, a, a search for a new administrator right now, today. Uh, because it's going to take some time and that's the reason for it. So we know we're going to do this. Why not go ahead and get started? We should have probably already done it. But I'm just, I'm just adding one line to it that since there seems to be a lot of controversy over this flow chart, let the new person that's going to be in charge give us some direction or ask us. Let them come back because they may have a totally different idea. I don't want to demand that the new person has to work it the way that the last person was in here because they may disagree.
Now, are we talking about two new people? The planning director and the city?
Oh, well, this, now I'm saying we put this on hold. Cause this one, this, this, this gives us a finance director, IT director, uh, a-
You're not hiring all those positions, only one.
Well, you are hiring all those positions.
Only going out for search for one.
Just one.
Just one.
Well, how are you going to hire a finance director if you've already got his manager? You're going to make him a director?
He has the opportunity to apply. I said, we're looking for-
Apply? So, so you're not going to put this out?
Yes. No, we, I said, we're doing one, the finance director. Oh, the administrator is a foregone conclusion. I mean, we should have-
Well, we do an administrator.
And I have brought that up early in my, uh, tenure here that we need to do that. So I was waiting for somebody to bring it up. Thank you.
I am not recommending that you send that one to Colin. I'm recommending you just advertise for a finance director first.
So assistant deputy administrator, we're not going to put out that? Cause that's, that's an executive level position.
But we have someone that is doing that job and doing that job well.
We don't have no one on that job.
Yes, we do.
Who?
Everything that's responsible under here plus more is Sharon's responsibility right now. Everything that's done, everything that's underneath that city, deputy city clerk, plus finance department, plus IT is already underneath the deputy clerk or clerk deputy administrator. Those things already exist in our current structure under one person.
If they already exist, then why did you put it in there?
Because we're moving those off to different places. We're moving the finance responsibility off to a finance director.
You've asked for a hundred thousand dollars?
I asked for more than that. First time we addressed this. I said before COVID, it would cost a hundred thousand dollars plus.
And I'd like to have other things that's a higher priority to me.
We have a motion and second, further discussion, Councilman Roth.
Question. So does the motion? Because I, I had a totally different idea of what I was going to do here. I was just trying to clarify what we're doing.
I mean, I think there's unanimity, unanimity amongst going out and putting it out for the administrator. I think that's probably, everybody thinks that should happen right now.
Okay, and, and my questions were with the flow chart. You know, I didn't think I had enough information. I got a little bit more today, right now. I got a little bit more today. So, but what just concerned me a minute ago was the idea that we weren't going to, we weren't going to use our search firm for, for a city administrator. This is the most important job of.
No, we are going to absolutely do that. Nobody's trying to say we're not. No, I said for the finance director, I'm not recommending that.
Oh, 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 okay, okay.
No, I'm recommending we just put through the normal circles, FGFOA, those kind of things for your finance director upfront before you go out for a national search on that.
Okay, so, so where I'm going to put my vote right now, I'm going to explain my vote. I, I, I'm going to go with this. I, I am not opposed to this flow chart. I think HR should be a department head. Okay, that's, that's, that's a modification I see. I want to get the city administrator search going immediately.
You're behind already.
We're, we are behind. And I want the firm to know that this job needs to be filled by, not, not, not recommend, this job, we need to have recommendations so we can fill this job by the end of June. That, that's, that's a goal. And if this chart helps get us there, then I'm for it. But I, whatever the motion is, I'm going to back the motion just because it gets us to the search of, of getting a, a city administrator in.
The motion also contains not doing this now.
Yeah, well, but we can, we can bring this back up when there's more.
We're three months out.
No, no, I'm, I'm not, and I don't, look, if, 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 if this is explained that, that if our, if our search team says that this chart will help, and, and I, I, I think Pam said that she, enough information. I got more information today than I had a week ago. A week ago, I did not have.
Mr. Roth, I'm going to interrupt you because you could have got a lot of information if you had asked. Because that's why I put it on the agenda. That's, I hope that we can go forward with today. But also, when stuff comes on the agenda, it's not trying to hide anything. It's trying to put more out there for us.
Take the time in the workshops. That's what they're there for.
Well, see.
I would have loved all these questions in the workshop.
Well, and, and when I'm saying that, I'm not, I'm not.
Organizational chart will do.
Well, I'm not, I'm not trying to be. Look, I want to hear what council people are saying.
That's why we're having those.
So, so we're doing that today. So we're finding out. So today, I know more than I did last week that I think that someone was like me. I'm not necessarily opposed to this. I just needed more information. What is going to get us to fill that slot the soonest? That's what I want. That is the goal that I want. If this is it, then, then fine. We can bring, look, we can decide to hire, we can decide to tell a search firm to get this process started. And if they say, well, this flow chart will help, well, then, then we can bring this up at the next meeting again. I, I got more information today than I did a week ago, you know? So, and, and I, I would like to see HR under there, but because I, I personally, I ran a small business. My employees were everything. If I had crappy employees, I had a crappy business. So I just think that, 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 that is a, a modification I'd like to see to this. But I want to get the search going. I've got more information now. I hear from, I hear, I hear your concerns, and I agree. I heard your concern. I, I, I'm in the same boat. I, you know, I heard Mr. Sanders' concern. So just because I'm not doing this today, I, 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 I can see this again.
Here, here is my response to that. I don't care when you do it. It was seemingly not an issue at the end of the workshop last week. That's why it's on the consent agenda. It seemed like it was resolved. If you didn't have the questions asked at the workshop, I can't help that. We walked out of there. Ms. Coker said, she assumed that it was a done deal at that point. Everybody had had the opportunity to discuss it. If you didn't have the opportunity or enough time at the workshop, say so at the workshop. Don't beat us up when we move it forward based on the, I know, but based on the consensus of what it sounded like at that workshop. If you, if you have issues, voice them. We're not in a rush to bring it forward. It was a only saying, it appeared to be that it was fine to move it forward. We can't read your minds. If you want to talk to me about it, talk to me about it. If you don't want to talk to me about it, I can't help you.
And, and so, A, you know, I'm not beating you up. I'm asking questions, which I'm trying to do so respectfully. I hope everyone sees that. B, this is the problem with workshops is if someone doesn't understand, quite often, they won't ask a question. If, or, or, you know, I mean, it's, workshops don't have a vote.
But.
So.
Patrick, you're the most informed. You've been here longest. Mary Ann's been here a long time. Bill's been here a couple of years now. Ms. Coker calls me before every meeting. Pam has called me before every meeting, saying, look, I, there's stuff I don't, maybe. Is there anything I really need to know, other discussion points? Everybody should be doing that if you have questions or concerns. That's the way it works. And. And I would hope that's the way it's going to work for a new administrator.
And one of the things, Mr. Roth, you brought up is this company's going to want to have something to put on there so they have some organizational. And that's why, again, I asked Carl to put it on the agenda for the workshop because we want to discuss it. And if it would have said, hey, let's have another discussion about this, it would have been fine. But we, soon as I got in here, I started talking about, we're going to start needing to look at administrator. That's why I also asked for the budgets to start early because we know we're losing that. We've got to start. That's important to me. And you and I've discussed that over times where how important things are. Mrs. Councilwoman Coker, add it up first.
Yeah, I just, I want to clarify. I can't support a motion that doesn't, that just says you can come up with your own flow chart when you come. We've got to have something in place to get a new administrator. We've got to get started on that search. We all agree on that. So I just want to clarify, I can't support the motion, but I, I want to go forward with getting an administrator. And, and we can even say, you know, we're open to, you know, making changes to this if, if someone brings us a better way to do it. But at this point.
Why wouldn't you be?
Exactly. So I just wanted to clarify.
There's no reason not to.
I can't support the motion, but that's where I'm at.
Councilwoman Barnaby?
I can't support this motion as given, and I said it earlier. In my professional experience, let me just clarify this to me, because I heard what Mr. Sanders said. When a new elected administration comes in, yes, many times, there are cross-the-board changes. When a new appointed administrator comes in, if she or he is worth their salt, it takes them a good six months to get the lay of the land. I don't believe that we have individuals in these positions that haven't earned the right to be there and are doing poor jobs for us. I think that the, the individuals that we have, particularly considering what the city has been through and the changes that we had to undertake dealing with the COVID pandemic, they have done an exemplary job. And I think it is important that we give the search firm as much information as possible. I am not in favor of saying, let's hire somebody and they can clear the decks. And that's what that, that motion says to me. So I can't support that, Mr. Sanders.
Can I address it?
Mr. Roth, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, all, all I was going to say is trying, trying to move, listening to everyone and trying to move this forward. And, and I, I, I do, I'm trying to be open-minded and, and problem-solving on this. So I, you know, want to get the search done. Should have been, it should have been in the works, but let's get it done. And I want to, you know, be very specific. This needs to happen immediately. This needs to be high priority. My, my biggest, I got some questions done today. You know, since we're creating a flow chart, we can bring this flow chart back if it helps the search next meeting. My suggest, my suggestion is HR goes under the, goes under the, I have a motion on, I have a motion and on there that I, I don't disagree with the motion. I hear the other people. I'd like to get unanimous on this or as close as possible. I, I believe HR should be a department head. I, I want, I'm going to support the motion just because it gets the, the position started for hiring. I'm fine with this coming back as soon as possible. I'd just like to see HR as department head.
Mr. Sanders?
I've worked in the corporate world for forty-some odd years, and it doesn't work that way. It may work that way in government, but that's the problem with government. That, you know, you're, you're the administrator right now, Carl, and all these people are currently reporting to you. And three months from now, you want to set the stage for the new person. I just think that is clearly, I don't know what your motive is. And we're, you're asking for a hundred thousand dollars.
Exactly what my motive is.
I'm not finished. You're asking for a hundred thousand dollars for executive pay. And we don't pay our employees at the Lorien enough right now. I'm, I'm not going to vote for that. While we're not increasing executive pay in a pandemic with a two percent cut in our, in our revenue stream. This is, this is completely, anybody that would vote for that has no concern for our current employees that is not making those kinds of salaries.
I will only have one comment. Remember that in two items on the agenda, please. Please remember that after you get past the fire pension.
And I'm, I'm just going to make a comment to some of the stuff that's said. This was brought up to try to make it easier to get an administrator in here.
I, I hear you.
And, and one of the things that, that Councilman Roth, that you said is this motion could be a singular motion to put out the, for the administrator, and that's what it should be. Because if any administrator watches this meeting, they're going to run. You know, they're going to run from the standpoint of what they're going to do. And, and I've been in the corporate world for a long time, and I am not, I probably agree with you more on, on government things at times, Mr. Sanders, the way some things are run. But I also think administratively, you've got to think smart and you've got to work forward. And I don't think this motion puts that forward. But, you know, I mean, is, is, Mrs. Barnaby, have your card up?
Yes, I do. In my experience, I believe it is important that government run business-like. But government cannot run like a business because a business's job is to make a profit. And in government, you don't do that. You, you, you do things with a fiduciary responsibility. You try to be a good steward of the responsibilities and the monies that you are given. They are other people's money. They're not our personal money. And if this was, if the motion was the motion to go forward and, and engage the recruiting firm to look at a city administrator, period. I am for that. I will vote for that today. That's not what the motion is. Because the motion contains direction to someone, some unknown person that we haven't even interacted with.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Understanding that the first part of the motion I truly second. I would like to see this go forward, but I also would like to know that it could at some point come back. And if, if something's not quite working and needs a tweak, that we would be able to.
Come back to you. You guys are the ultimate decision makers. It is not the administrator that's the ultimate decision maker.
Okay. I think I'm okay.
But also with what you just said is the first part of the motion can come up. If this motion dies, it can come up right away and be said.
Make an amendment if she wants to make an amendment.
But if you want to make an amendment to the motion now to just have the first part in it and the other. The organizational chart can be voted down on a, on a separate motion or up on a separate motion. And then, or be say, let's bring it back and tweak it later. But to put these two motions to get, to put this together, I think is wrong.
Well.
And I have a final comment.
If I may amend.
You've asked for a hundred thousand dollars today.
We've asked for discussion on a workshop.
No, that's, this is what was on a consent agenda.
Respond in total.
This was on the consent agenda for a hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
For executive pay.
The rest of the council, can I respond, please? Mayor, may I ask?
Well, you interrupted.
May I respond, please?
Please, let's have some decluttering here for both.
And, and Mr. Sanders was here in October of 2019. I'd laid out at that point in time, with the flow chart that was presented at that point in time, the exact cost that I thought it would be. I laid out at the bottom of the sheet, you could see it. It was going to be probably this much more for an IT director because we'd have to add the cost in. It would be this much more. In mine, in this particular thing, you're paying the administrator less than you're paying me. So there's some savings. I brought that up at the workshop. I brought those things up a year and three months ago. This is not a new topic. My motives, my motives when I ask about this are to try to put an organization that I have set here for twenty, almost twenty-six years and worked in around and through. And realizing, people call us a hybrid government for a reason. We are like no one else. We're not a city manager form of government. We're not a weak manager form of government. We're not a strong manager form of government. We are a hybrid form of government that has some real idiosyncrasies in it. You should have been on the conversations that I had with Colin just trying to explain our organization to him. How does the administrator's job work? Who's going to be hiring this person? How are they going to work after they're hired? Do you have the ability to hire and fire them? Do you, all of these things came up. He was trying to get his brain around it. I went in with Sharon for an hour and said, the guy does not, cannot get it because it is so different. We've created a completely different scenario. I'm trying to make it more streamlined, more obvious, the reporting responsibilities, always understanding that we have the unique issue with not only one person working at the will of council, which is where it is in most governments. We have seven, eight, would have if we added departments. That's a scary thing to people. Just putting him on this flow chart as a director scares the hell out of some people. Right now, you can't do anything about the IT director. You don't like what he does? Tough, doesn't make any difference. He doesn't work for you. That's a scary thing. You put the HR person in there. They are now subject to the will of council. That is a scary thing for most government employees to know that. I like to say that if you come in and it's perceived that you didn't wear the right color of shoes, you could be fired. That is a very scary thing for employees, and it doesn't work very well under those scenarios. So the more that you can make it very obvious how the reporting works, that they get comfortable with those kind of things. Who do they really report to on day-to-day? Who do they know that they ultimately need to satisfy, which is a mayor and council overall? That is important in an organization to know that. So when we're asking, we're, we're putting a box here, but it is a much bigger issue for people. You just put that box up there. You're asking them now to sign on the dotted line that they are willing to be an at-will employee when they have never been an at-will employee before. That is a tough thing.
Well, we, we changed that. We, we changed that, what, the end of last year, we got, we offer contracts now.
That's for everybody that's at-will.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't as favorable in that either.
But that's at-will.
Well, all these directors are getting contracts now with, 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 with high-level payouts.
Severances.
Severance.
If you decide you don't want them severance.
So let me ask you, what are you going to do with this hundred thousand dollars?
If I, the part of it was going to hire a finance director. If I, the part of it was going to hire a finance director. That's, the issue is finance director. It's not with any, it's, you have to bump the pay of the IT director because it's a manager. You would have to bump that.
I already make it over a hundred thousand, aren't you?
Doesn't make any difference. That's not the market for an IT director.
Oh.
He is low.
I've asked for a market of other cities and I have been.
That is low in the market for an IT director.
And Sharon, months ago.
That's, that's beside the point at this point.
Well, it's not.
But you're at.
If I'm making a decision, I'd like to know.
Let him finish the question.
But we, but you asked where we would put that money. And it's in a finance director. It's in the different salaries for an IT director. If you want to raise an HR to make it a department director, you're raising this, you're raising the pay of that person. Because right now, they're two levels down instead of the top rung. You're adding those things up. So those are all things that come into play that you need to do. And you have to be in the market if you're going to hire people. You have to be in the market.
Mrs. Coachman, you had said something earlier about withdrawing your second on the second part of the motion, but the first part you would be for putting it out. And, and I may suggest something here because again, I asked Mr. Callahan to bring it up at the last workshop. Maybe we bring this back and everybody get with him and give your ideas to him.
If you like alternatives, tell me.
Yeah, and then we can bring this up again and discuss it with more detail on the thing. So if you withdraw the second part of your motion, we have to see if the motioneer would accept that.
I have other alternatives. That's the way things can work.
You've already heard mine.
Yeah, I know, but you know what I mean. There's even other things that can be made.
Let's get this motion, if, if, Mrs. Coachman, if I understand correctly, you wish to withdraw your second? And is that the way to, how are we going to do that, Mr.?
You need.
Well, the, she can withdraw, she can withdraw her second or she can ask if the maker of the motion is willing to amend the motion.
Okay, so that's what, so you're asking him that? Ask him so it can be on the record.
Will you amend your motion?
Will you vote for the motion as is?
You can't say that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. She's, are you influencing her?
No, she can't say that.
No, she can't answer.
She didn't answer.
She can't answer legally.
If the motion is not being amended, then I withdraw my second based on part of the motion.
So you want to withdraw or you want to amend it?
Are you willing to withdraw? I mean amend it?
Do you have to?
The second part?
Do I have to amend it?
I withdraw my second.
You, okay.
So there's, there's a motion on the floor with no second. Is there any second? And the motion fails with the, with no second. So Mr. Roth, would you like to make a motion?
I, I would like to make a motion that the, that this, we, there's no action on, on the flow chart right now that, right?
No, it's not, no, we're just discussing. No motion on there, so.
Okay, so, so my motion is that we instruct the administrator to instruct the firm.
Why don't we, let's, let's deal with this flow chart and then when we get out of the consent agenda, we'll go to the.
Okay, I, I got it. So, so we're going to table the flow chart for the, until the next meeting. Everyone will get together and, and talk to the administrator about what we'd like to see in the flow chart and.
And that should be the.
That should be a tabling motion right away.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's tabled.
Okay.
Tabling motion.
Okay.
Tabled to win.
Till it comes off the table.
Well, not till a workshop because you can't vote.
But we, okay.
I, I, I can vote. It's, so it's, wait, if it's tabled, it's tabled, right?
No.
Well, it has to have a date.
Mr. Mayor, at this point in time, I would like to make a motion that we table the organization chart to our next workshop where we can bring it off the table to discuss it at the workshop, to bring it to our next council meeting at that point.
Is there a second?
Do we, do we need, do we have a workshop scheduled? Because I don't want to have a workshop just for this.
No.
No, there's other things on.
Meeting of the month is usually Wednesday.
We have a second.
A second.
There is no discussion on a table and motion.
Starting the vote in Ward five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Thank you. That's tabled till the workshop. And then, Mr. Sanders, you have "I" you wanted to discuss on the consent agenda?
Uh, I thought we was going to have another motion for.
Well, that will be outside of the, once we get past the consent agenda items.
Oh, okay. Right, that's no problem. Uh, "I", I, there was just no contract and this must have been done before I got here. So what, what can you give us? Give me a brief explanation of what this.
Yeah, what we, what we did about two years ago, we had three things that needed to move forward. We had a mobility study, which was to, as you, as you're aware, our impact fees, probably more aware than anyone, our impact fees really limit us as to what we can spend funds on. We're restricted to only new road construction in, in our road impact fee. And Ms. Hartley brought up the fact at that point in time that if we went to a mobility fee in lieu of a road impact fee, that we would line out certain items that with that fee, we'd have more, we wouldn't be quite so limited. You could do sidewalks. You could do things that are within the mobility fee that you couldn't do under the road impact fee. So it made sense. So we hired Jonathan Paul, New Urban, New Urban Concepts, to create a mobility fee force. He is just about done with that mobility fee study. At that same point in time, it was a recommendation that we update through the planning department our land development regulations. Our, our land development regulations are old and needed review. Jonathan has gone through those as well. My recommendation and part of the reason for this extension is that I, I do agree with you on certain things. I agree that at this point in time, it makes sense. We're pretty close to hiring a planning director. And since the planning director will deal 100% with those land development regs, that it'd be important for them to have their say in those land development regs before passing them. So it may take past the time that the current contract date expires in June would be. It may take a little time to get through y'all with those. So it would allow for extension of time for that. And the third thing we hired Jonathan Paul to do is the micro-mobility study, which is for the scooters and that whole plan. That's all under New Urban Concepts. Jonathan is doing all of those. This extends his contract for a year. His contract had two one-year extensions, if necessary, involved. No additional monies, just the timing so that the contract stays active.
Well, we have a budget, did you say? And have, what's the budget?
Budget was 125, I think, for the land development regs, 100 for the mobility study, and I believe 30 for the micro-mobility study.
Each year?
For the contract, for the process of completing that entire process, not on a yearly basis, for completing the process.
So what's the renewal cost?
Renewal costs nothing. That is just an extension of time so that he can complete the contracts under his current con. Otherwise, his contract would expire and we wouldn't be done with them.
So he didn't complete the contract on time?
We stopped it.
We stopped, we slowed it down.
We stopped it?
We slowed it down.
Yeah.
So we're recommending that we extend it for the period of year so that these three items, two of them should be done within the timeframe.
So we're not done with any of the, the contractual.
You'll, you'll see within the next couple of months, you will see the mobility study and the micro-mobility study come up. You probably won't see the land regs till a little further along.
So what have we spent to date?
A hundred thousand. We've already spent a hundred thousand on the land development regs. They're that far along. The micro-mobility study, without an exact amount, I think we're 80 of 100. And the mobility fee, we're about halfway through the 30,000 on the micro-mobility study.
Councilman Roth?
Yeah, just as a reminder, what, what had happened there was the, they came in with some very liberal new urbanism ideas that I think everybody wasn't comfortable with. And then at the same time, our planning director disappeared, so.
So he went back and revised those after hearing you guys as a group? Because he came in and presented to you. After he heard your comments, he went back and revised them. And since then, with COVID, we've not had meetings of that nature. We could now, and I've tried to gear him up to say, we got to get back in here and get these things done.
Is this the same guy did 14th Street that was that?
Yeah.
Which we never followed up on?
Well, we, we.
We should have stopped it.
The comment, well, no, that was just a piece of it. That's a very small piece of it. But that was the thing that brought about the most discussion.
I think it was also the micro, micro housing.
Yeah, the really, the high houses in certain areas. So he was redoing it based on that. And that's what we'll ask him when he comes back in, to give a presentation. You heard all of our comments the last time in there. Show us the changes.
But that was also the time period where our planning director disappeared.
Oh, yeah, it was after, yeah.
So, so are we waiting for the new planning director?
Not on those. Those are far enough along. I'm waiting on Marshall to give me a timeframe, which I've asked for is a timeframe, to get Jonathan Paul in here so that we can finish up the mobility study, mobility fee, not the land development regs, the mobility fee, which is for the abilities to spend in lieu of the impact fee, road impact fees. And the micro-mobility study, which is the ordinance necessary to control where the scooters go, the zones, the speed limits, all of those things. Put that ordinance in place and then to help us get out into the market as to finding probably the one operator that does that. Because everybody recommends you have one operator to, to pretty much take care of the bicycle peds, things like that. And where you put the stations and, and how you control that. And that would be a little bit of additional study. But I think those dovetail together. Remember, we're in a moratorium on those micro-mobilities. We've got to get this process done before that moratorium ends. So, so we need to move forward with Jonathan. Get him to, get him to the end line. It's frustrating, frustrating with me trying to get these things to the end line. They're there, but they're not quite done yet. So this is just to extend that contract a year. No additional funds associated with, with these contracts that exist now.
When was the original contract?
Pardon?
When was the original?
Two, two, two and a half year, two years ago.
And I have a copy, so, because I, there was nothing attached. So I was like, what am I approving? I don't see nothing. I don't have a problem with it, but I like, would like to at least see the contract.
The things in the contract. No, I'll get you a copy of it.
All right, any further questions or you have a motion to?
Uh, I have a motion to approve it.
Is there a second? All right, second. Um, we'll start in Ward one or for any further discussion? Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, and I think best to move on with the agenda and then under seven, we'll bring up the new business. So we stay within the agenda items.
Okay, all right.
So moving on, consent agenda items are all approved as is. And then I, I just think that, and again, great discussion, whether you agree with it or not. It was great discussion. And there's opportunity, again, to talk about some of this. And I think all of our staff, if you have questions from the staff at any point, call them before, get information, it's out there. And then some of it may, you know, again, I don't mind having some of it here, but there might be opportunity to answer some of your questions before we get to the, the next step too. All right, Mrs. Beauchamp?
Yes, next, we're under business advertising petitions, hearings and communications. We have the second reading and public hearing of ordinance 3075. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Part I Charter and related laws, Subpart B related laws, Article III Firefighters Retirement System of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bradenton, Florida. Amending Section 6 Benefit Amounts and Eligibility. Amending Section 7 Pre-Retirement Death. Amending Section 8 Disability. Amending Section 10 Optional Form of Benefits. Amending Section 16 Minimum Distribution of Benefits. Amending Section 24 Military Service Prior to Employment. Amending Section 27 Prior Fire Service. Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability of Provisions, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Here With and Providing an Effective Date. Again, this is a public hearing today and we'll be asking for a vote on this. Essentially, this is an update to the fire pension plan that we currently have on, in our code. These are IRS regulations and a state statutory requirement that by, by the history of running the police pen, or the fire pension, we have to make these updates in accordance with the IRS code. So every once in a while, you'll see these come forward where we do these just procedural updates. And this is one of those. We've been assured there are no costs to the city associated with any of these changes. This is basically cleanup and IRS obligations.
Ms. Beauchamp, also just to, for the new council people, when you make a pension change, there is a requirement that there's an actuarial study done to indicate to you the amount of increase in cost or decreasing cost, as the case may be. So they're required to do that study and present you with a letter. In this instance, the last page in your packet is that letter that says there is, there is no change in, in the costs associated with these changes. And that comes directly from the, the pension actuary.
So that's all the discussion we'll have for it till we go to public hearing, correct? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak?
I don't wish to speak on this, but I did sign up for consent agenda.
Oh, I didn't. Okay, all right, we'll get back to that. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 3075? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would be happy to make the motion for the approval of the requests and information regarding the firefighters' pension board that has been presented to us today.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? We'll start the vote in Ward two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Um, I'm gonna go back because I didn't know what AFR was. So. So with Glenn Gibelina, is there a comment on the, going back to the consent agenda?
Still no Wi-Fi in here. For the record, Glenn Gibelina, so I want to talk about the flow chart. It is very difficult for the citizens to get this information. As far as attaching documents, not only on this agenda, not only on the CRA, but previous agendas has been absolutely horrific. We have, we as citizens have to jump through hoops. We have to email a person for the documents. Maybe they don't get back to us on time. Maybe they do. Maybe they can't find the documents. I would encourage each and every one of you, before you come to the daisies, to go that agenda and try to open those documents yourself. You have a privilege, as Carl gives out special documents. Do we have a copy of the floor document here today? The flow document for the public? Okay. I didn't see it back there. The other thing I want to say is for your administrator, look, you got a goldmine here. People want to live here. You're not going to have any problem finding another administrator. You may get someone from Clearwater or Ocala, well-greased, well-informed, great administrators. Put the flow chart in there, but they're going to come back and say, this is how we do it and it's worked successfully for years. So I would, I would strongly suggest that when you do that, do that, reach out that. They're going to come in with their own ideas. I will tell you that. And probably better ideas or enhance the ideas that how this city's been run for the last couple of decades. So I don't think you're going to have any problem with that. As far as the planning, you know, put it out there. And you might want to do like the county does. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna interview three, but in the, in the meantime, if you want to take the job temporarily, we'll put you in that position today. But in three months, when we do our interviews, you have to throw your hat back into the pool. And then you don't go without a planning guy. And then if he does work out, he throws his hat back in and you can interview him at that time. You might even want to do that for the, for the city administrator. So that, that's my two cents, but you have a great community here. You are not going to have any problem. I would say the search, you probably want to stay within the state only because there's a lot of Florida statutes and regulations that, that administrator would have to know with the, with the state statutes and laws. I think going out of state of Florida might be a mistake, but you won't have any problem filling this position. You've got a great community here and I think you're going to get someone that's just going to hit a home run. And the ideas that may have not worked here, they're going to shine some new light on, on, on how they did things, like they say, how we did it up north, you know? So I think it's going to be a successful search and, and I hope the transition is going smoothly. Thank you.
And it will be he or she?
He or she, yes.
All right, moving on, new business, and we're going to start new business council first. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, first off, so I want to, what, I'm going to be making the recommendation for starting the search for the city administrator position. But first off, I just want to go back. What we just did, I, I don't see anything wrong with the, the exercise we just did about discussing the flow chart. Um, you know, this is, we're talking about, uh, Mr., Mr., Callahan is right, we have a hybrid form of government. It's, it's very confusing. I think we have a, we have a city charter that's, it's very confusing, did not get fixed on, in the last, uh, uh, go around, still is out there. But, um, what we have, you know, we're talking about how to replace the first ever city administrator in the city of Bradenton history. This is not a small item. This is not, this is not a minor detail. Um, you know, this is something that, that should have discussion. Uh, I mean, the worst thing we could have done was had it on the consent agenda and voted, voted for it without discussing it. That, that would not be proper government. So, the act that we went through to get here is proper. You know, this is a big deal. And so, I don't, so with that being said, uh, I, I make a motion that we, uh, inform the, uh, search team, that we want them to immediately start the search for a city administrator. Um, I, I think it should probably be nationwide. Um, I don't agree with just the state of Florida, uh, that, that it be, it be immediate and, and with high priority, um, as the, uh, we're basically behind the clock on this, and I do not want to be without a city administrator. Say it.
Motion and a second? All right, discussion? Any further discussion, Mr. Callahan?
After you vote.
Oh, after vote? Okay, any further discussion? All right.
I will say, um, city administrators are very professional and they have typically, their tenure at cities are about five years, seven years. And, um, they come in, and they, they come in running. They don't come in not knowing anything. So, I don't want that perception that this is a goofball that we've hired fresh out of college, you know? These guys come in, the only thing they need to know is where the light switch is. Because they, they, they can pick up the budget and run with it and tell you that this is the best way to do things. So, I've always, um, said I like for the department head. I think Mr. Gallo said that, don't tell me how to run my department. If he said it once, I know he said it a hundred times. And that's all I'm saying is, don't tell me how to run my department, because I've been doing it a long time. And I don't tell any department head how to run their department. I never have, never will. They should hire, fire, and develop that department the way they say fit, because they are supposed to make sure it works fine. If we see a problem, we will tell them. So, I just think it's, it's important that that person, he or she, has the full rights to make those, uh, decisions when they get here. And matter of factly, it's only three or four more months. There is no rush for this. So, and again, anytime I see a rush, I question why we're doing it.
Further discussion? Start the voting in Ward three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
All right, five to zero. All right, and then, um, I'm just going to make one comment before Mr. Callahan. This was not a rush on the mayor's office part of it, because obviously I've been hearing it for the last year and three or four months, and we brought it to the workshop. So, again, if there's workshop questions, please bring them up. And it was not put on the consent agenda. It was my direction to put it on the consent agenda, because we had talked about it and I didn't feel there was that. If I would have felt that, I would have put it, you see me put things under my parts of it. So, I feel that we've got to have the communication, we've got to have the discussion, and I am open for that. We've got to keep going forward. But if, in, in my eight years on the council, there was times when we didn't do anything, because it would say something and eight months would go by before anybody'd bring it back up. So, I'm going to bring things up in this position, because I think that's going to move us forward in this city. I'm not saying when I bring something up that we should automatically vote five to zero, because I said it. It's because I want discussion. That's important to me. Now, Mr. Callahan?
Yeah, I think when, the, one of the things I'm going to ask you all to do is review our resolution that we did in seventeen and/or the complete job description administrator before you send it to the, um, search firm. He needs to know, and everybody needs to know, exactly the job that they will be taking and what those responsibilities are. And make sure that you guys are good with those responsibilities, because that's what they're going to expect when they come in. You can't put something in a job description and then think that you do things differently when they get here. The, the case in point is going to be, they need to thoroughly understand that they do not hire the department heads. That it, that is clearly not within their realm to hire the department heads, nor fire them. So, recommendation, so when, when I give you that job description again, please make sure you read it. Scratch through the things that you don't like, because it happened three years ago, almost four years ago now. And just make sure that it's what you want the job to be for the new administrator.
Mr. Callahan, is, is that not the difference between a city manager and a city administrator? Is, the city, city managers hire and fire everybody?
Right.
That we do not have a city manager, we'd have to change the charter.
Right.
I, before we went to city administrator, I checked with the League of Cities and made sure it was legal. And they said we could do it as long as we understood what it was. And a city administrator, that is the job description. You, you're doing the administration, you do not, you're not a city minister, city manager, you do not have the right to hire or fire. So, they should know that.
They should know it, but most of the people that come here are going to have the experience of being managers someplace.
Well, and then...
That's why it's got to be clearly lined out to them to understand that if they've been managers or administrator, where they've had that responsibility, that is not the case here.
But won't that be the job of the search team to, to explain to them the difference between them? If someone comes here and wants to be a city manager, they're going to be disappointed.
Absolutely, and that's why I want to make sure that the job description, when we give that jo, we give the job description to Colin, I want to make sure that the job description is exactly what you want the person to do. That's all.
But, but it is by, by calling it a city administrator, it's actually already doing that. They should know.
Well, there's administrators that have the responsibility of hiring, firing people. It, in some instances, it's, it's a either or. You can have administrators who act as managers, there's no difference. Ours can't be a manager, because we don't have those powers. You may have an administrator that does have those powers. So, just, we just got to be, be clear in that.
Ms. Sanders?
It's been a while since the red, red resolution, but doesn't it say, uh, you don't hire and fire?
No, it does. That's why I'm saying, I want to make sure that in there, it says what it does say.
That was approved by the council.
Well, what it says is, you guys hire by, I mean, the recommendation should be the manager would bring forward somebody to you. If they want to replace a department head, it really should say, rather than the mayor or a group of the commissioners, it really should say, the administrator will bring forth recommended people for this job. That would be the clearest and most efficient way, because ultimately, you, like you said before, you want them to have their people. I mean, you do. You want them to say, because if, you don't want to go to Jim and say, Jim, you're not doing your job. You should go to the administrator and say, Jim, you're not doing your job. Either get him to do it, you know, because you may have to have the talk to him, because we don't want to sit up here in an open meeting and tell him he's got to go. You need to either get him right with it or figure out what the heck to do. It does give the administrator the right to recommend to you that you replace somebody that's a department director. But that's, but I think the, the most efficient way, when you look at this, would be ultimately say, your administrator will bring forward recommendations for their department heads. That's the most efficient. And, and then it accomplishes the goals that you and I both think are right, that the people who are working for you directly bear some allegiance to you, because it's really unfair for the administrator to be sitting there going, well, these guys aren't doing their job, and I can't do anything about it, but I'm going to hold you responsible. That's, that's a tough position to be in, and that's, it's kind of where we are, you know? Fortunately, we haven't had, we haven't run up against that, but you, you could be in that position.
Well, I'm, I'm going to make a comment going back to my Ward two council seat. We were in that situation, and it was very difficult to have, because with the sunshine law and all that, for somebody to bring up, well, I think this department head needs to be terminated with cause, and hope you get a second, and then hope you get a third vote, that's a very difficult position to be in as a council person, as well as an administrator with no authority. So, that is very important to read that, and, and that might need to be, and I'm just telling you from my experience, it needs to be brought up, because again, my whole goal in coming into this seat was to make our city better and make it easier for our citizens and, and council to understand things and work through. So, um, you know, I may not always be politically correct at times, but I'm going to be, you know, citizen, uh, friendly or correct. So, I've sat through that, and it, it is not an easy job, Mr. Callahan, with the position you're in right now. And we want to make it an easier job for the administrator. And I think that, you know, obviously, you're the voting power, and three to two votes win it, but it doesn't always look good when you're doing things for staff at times. So, um, moving on, Mrs. Beauchamp, any new business by department heads or city attorney?
Uh, just the item you have under legislative.
Okay, just the legislative part.
Lobbyist discussion.
Um, we had talked about that at the workshop a little bit, and before, um, the discussion regarding legislative lobbyists. Mr. Callahan, you had been asked to do a few things and...
Yeah, it's, it's difficult, um, within just a couple of days to come up with stuff. But we did reach out, and I have some copies of some contracts that, that are out there, uh, from some pretty good groups, not just what Mr. Flanagan brought forward, and I'll distribute them here in a second. We have the contract that Manatee County uses with Dean Mead. So, it's the county's contract to show you what they do, what the expectations are, those kind of things. Uh, Dean Mead works for Holmes Beach and Manatee County. We also reached out to a, a large group that's very familiar with people here in town, Ballard Partners, and we got copies of three of their contracts that they have with this different organizations, uh, different communities in there for you to look at. What you'll find out is, there's, there's a few things consistent in all the contracts. What are the responsibilities? What are you assigning them to do? What, what are they expected to do? Are they expected to meet with you? Are they expected to be accessible if they're in Tallahassee and you're there? Those are the kind of things that are laid out in all these contracts. What varies is, is the amount of money you pay and whether expenses are included or not included. And one firm does it a little different, which I think is pretty, I, I kind of like it, because it's the expectation that not only do you, they represent you, because they're representing you all year round, that they represent you not only for legislative session, that they represent you in front of the executive section, which is the governor's office, which is just as critical. You get something through legislative, but you don't get it, if you get a governor's veto, you're, you're shot, you're down. And then the third is, they help and aid and assist you, because they're working throughout the community, if knowing what kind of funds are out there that may be available for you even to ask for. You don't, you may not even know to ask for them. Part of their job is to help bring those kind of things to you. So, that's, it's kind of unique, I think, in the, in, in the Dean Mead, but, but it's also rings consistent with a lot of others as to what their expectations. So, I'll pass these out, I have copies of them. Um, I think it's hard to make a decision. There are, when you, when you look online, if you go to, uh, floridalegislature.com or the Legislative Office, you, you look up Florida lobbyist, there's a list of everybody who is a registered lobbyist in this, at that level. And it shows who's registered as a lobbyist for legislature, who's, who's registered as a lobbyist for the executive group, which is the governor's office. And then it lists them two different ways, by the entity and then by the principal. So, if you wanted to look up, who does Lombo Key use, you could look up Lombo Key, and they show those folks. And you could look up Winter Haven, or you could look up any place like that, and they would show who represents them. And you start seeing some common names for you. And I don't know if, if it's a built-in perk of being a high-level legislator, I think it is, probably, that after you sit out a short period of time, you'll recognize the names of these more powerful groups that are, that are the led, that are the lobbyists. The more powerful groups are lobbyists, you'll recognize the name, um, Dean Cannon. Gee, amazing. Pete Dunbar, David Ramda, they're all people that were very high up in the, in the legislature, either had been previous speaker, or whatever they, what they call legislature, or had been senators at a very high ranking level, because they know the ins and outs and know the local. So, let me distribute these to you. I don't know how to tell you to move forward. I think you have a couple of options, because there are some known entities, and, and you'll see some of these that are, uh, do a lot of work with municipalities. There are a ton of lobbyists up there. If you start looking at that, look at who does municipalities, because it doesn't do you any good to look at a lobbyist that represents the Florida fruit industry, that represents hospitals, that represents all the other interests, water, but, maybe water management's fine, but they represent a lot of other interests. And you can see the codes that are associated with them. Look at those. Those are the people that represent the municipalities like us. And, um, I, I think you could, you could select, again, this is kind of like when you get down to the top four planners, you're going to select a good one if you go with some of the, the bigger names, if you go with somebody like Mark. Yeah, it's, he, it's not, it's not as well-rounded, but doesn't mean you can't go that way. So, those are options that are available to you, but let me go ahead and pass this out. If you can take one and pass it down for each, each group, this is the Dean Mead group.
This is, I have a, I have a quick and dirty proposal from the Ballard partners, because they were willing to put something together in about half a day. They are also the ones that provided multiple contracts, multiple contracts from various organizations that they...
That's one down.
That they work for. One, one thing I think you'll see that's noticeable with this is, the larger the city, the larger the fee.
This is when we want to be a small city.
I do apologize, but these things just came in, like, end of day yesterday, trying to get these things. So, I wanted to make sure you had them. Don't know whether you can make a decision today or whether you want to hold that over.
That was two cents.
But, um, but you can see the kind of things that, that are...
That's all I got with that one. Somebody may have two of them.
Can I ask how they, they came in?
Winter Havens.
Or why they came in?
What, you mean why they came in? We asked them to come, we asked them to send us stuff. We looked out to the largest folks and said, can you send us copies of contracts? We called the county, and they said, can you send us a copy of your contract? So, that we each have something, and says, what's a contract look like? And, and particularly with the counties, Dean Mead is a good contractor to look at, because it's a, one of the bigger outfits they do for a lot, so, so, but when they presented their, their county agreement to us, it was, it was a good example of just an agreement. Um, when we reached out to Ballard, um, they, they, they were able to provide these things that they came in late yesterday. Um, these things came in to, to be able to get, nobody is looking, these aren't a response to a solicitation, these are just giving information. Ballard says, here's a proposal, but if you look at it, it doesn't have any money or anything. It just says, here's a generic description of the kind of service arrangements we get into, and a little bit of history on lobbying. Because we jumped into this with both feet in one day, when usually, you know, it's a pretty long process that you would go through to figure out who your people are. Generally, they would be on board for an entire year, you would be talking to them leading up to the legislative session. You probably would be starting those conversations in the fall for, for legislative stuff. You would be working with your Manatee County delegation, you'd be working with you guys to come up with a legislative agenda, what you want to see, and working with your department heads to say anything in particular we're going after, that is potential funding opportunity that we would need help on, lobbying help on. So, these, these are just examples, which is what I think the best we could, with council saying, hey, last minute, what can we come up with? This is where we are. Are there any alternatives to just whatever we heard from Mr. Flanagan? Mr. Flanagan's a great guy, we've all know, most of us have known him for a long time, but that wasn't given any flavor of what else is out there.
All right, so, question? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having never hired a lobbyist before, I started doing some research myself. And one of the things that I discovered is, is while it is most beneficial to have hired a lobbyist about six months ago, so that we could have spoken with them, we could have compared apples to apples and oranges to oranges, um, the legislative session is going to begin a week from yesterday. Now, I also understand you can hire a lobbyist at any point in time during the session. And one of the other things that I found out, because of the way that the legislative session was set up this year, beginning in March, when it normally begins sometime in January-ish, should we choose to hire a lobbyist or a lobbying firm for a year, we will have not only this legislative session, but next year's session as part of that contract. So we will be getting basically two legislative sessions for the price of one, because of the timing, because of COVID and the way that it has been set up. I think that we all were in agreement that because of how the legislature is going to conduct things this year and in the past, I know Mr. Roth had made several trips to Tallahassee on behalf of cities as, and working with the Florida League of Cities in the past. I made several trips up there as a member of the Library Board of Trustees to try to secure library funding. You're not going to be able to do that this year. So I do believe it is important that we have someone up there that is, has the ability to be up there, has the ability to stay on track of what's going on and when it's happening and when votes are coming up, when things are coming into committee, when things are coming out of committee, when it goes to the floor for a vote. And these things are going to be kind of difficult, I think, for us this year. The League of Cities does a good job contacting us and saying, this is where it is. But I think having someone there that we have specifically requested that they look at, specifically for the Airbnb issue is one that I see that is a big one. The eroding of home rule, as it continues to happen, I think is going to be an issue. And since they are looking at a $3 billion shortfall in state funding, there's always the possibility that we have more and more unfunded mandates shoved down to the local level, and we need to be aware of that, too. I say all of that to say, this is a lot of information. And I can't recommend to anyone that we go forward exactly right now. I would not have a problem, if we're going to have a workshop next week, and we also notice it as a special meeting just to discuss this issue, if that would be of benefit, that you would find that you would have the time to go through, contact these people. There may be others out there that you find that you're, you feel more comfortable with. But again, scrambling now, trying to come up with stuff, and I kept checking with Mr. Callahan yesterday, have we gotten anything in? Have we gotten anything in? And I think it was, you know, like everything kind of happened right about five o'clock yesterday. And I know that Mrs. Coker has vast more experience with this than me, and I am very interested in, well, I mean, you worked in Tallahassee. So I would be very interested in hearing your thoughts on this, as every other council person. But again, Ms. Coker was the one that brought it up.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coker?
Yeah, that, I apologize if it seemed like it came out of nowhere, but it's part of me being new. But I've felt for a long time that as a city, we should, we should have a lobbyist that is representing just our interest. Having worked up there, I think it's, it's very evident that there are a lot of voices that are talking at everybody. And if you don't have a voice up there talking, then, then we can fall through, and like she said, unfunded mandates. I mean, there are so many things. It's not like I can sit here and say, oh, this is the agenda item I want watched. You know, I think stormwater management's going to be a big thing coming down, and I'd like to make sure we have a voice up there for us. And as far as the VRBOs and the Airbnbs, I mean, there are things that we probably don't, can't even conceive in our minds right now that are going to be issues that we're going to want to have a voice on. And most of us don't have the time to follow all the bills, to be at all those committee meetings where things can come up. And that's why I felt we should engage a professional. Now, if it, I didn't have one particular person in mind at all. I just happened to know Mark, and he came in, and I think it started the ball rolling. I'm with, I agree with Councilwoman Barnaby. I don't know that I could tell you today. I recognize a couple of names from when I was in Tallahassee, but it's been over 20 years. So I know enough to know that I don't know. But I do think it's, and I think even COVID is making it even more imperative, but I don't want us to rush it if people aren't comfortable. And so I just, I wanted to get the ball rolling, because I do think it's important for us.
Anyone else? Comments? Mr. Roth?
Yeah, definitely. I did some research, different, I checked through the league, Minnesota, but also I got a name out of their Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council from one municipal consultant. It's not on here. But these, this seems to be a lot of information right now. I could tell you that the two things that I know have just happened recently is the Florida League of Cities is a very well-organized lobbying team, where we get the legislators, we get the municipal leaders together, and we crash, we go up to Washington, it's called the Fast Fly, and then we do the same thing with the Legislative Action Days in Tallahassee. Both, both those things are canceled this year. So that leaves the league on their own to make the rounds as a lobbyist for the cities, along with all the other lobbyists. And I don't know what kind of access they're going to have in there, but it's going to be a really hard year for municipalities to go and protect, to be quite honest, to protect home rule. Tallahassee has a real appetite to take home rule away. They do also like to do unfunded mandates. And, you know, it's not a matter of what they can do for us, it's a matter of asking them to not do anything to us. So I think it's valuable to have someone. I think it's, it's getting, I think it's a good suggestion and how we get there, but it's, access is, access is going to be difficult this year. And I don't know what, how that, how that's even going to affect the lobbyist. That would probably be a good question of the lobbyist, is how you, how is COVID changing their ability to get in there and do business? Maybe they have an exemption. I know, I know the Florida Legislature conveniently exempts themselves from the sunshine regulations, which I think is very, very cool of them, you know? Anyway, that's all I got.
Anything else, honey? So, sounds like that we want to have, put it on as the workshop, a little bit more discussion, more information, and then set a special meeting? Do we want to, I know we've done it differently in the past with, where we discuss things and then go into a meeting, or does it?
You can have a workshop, and then, and you.
Time-specific.
And you can say you have a, you're setting a special meeting for that date. To, we like to say for a single purpose, which would be, if you want to discuss this ahead of, I guess, ahead of time.
We ain't do that, or can we just?
Or you want to set aside, just to meet, say it's a meeting because you want to discuss it, but it's a single-purpose meeting of deciding, of deciding on this.
I would like to see us at least discuss it at the workshop. I don't know how our attorney feels about if, I know that there are many entities, many government entities, that do workshops, say at like five o'clock in the afternoon, and then they have their council meeting at eight o'clock that night, kind of thing. So it can be done, that you can do a workshop, and then you have a timed certain special council meeting for a single purpose, to discuss the single issue that is on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't have an objection either way. It's really up to the preference of the council. Obviously, if you schedule something as a workshop, you won't be able to take official action there. But at the same time, if you schedule a special meeting, there's nothing prohibiting the council from having a lot of discussion, so.
So I guess what I, what I was trying to say is, how would the council, what makes you feel the most comfortable? And that's why I brought up the workshop, followed by a special meeting, so that we could get it done next week.
Would it be possible, we do the workshop, and then have it on our meeting two weeks from today?
Yes, that's right.
You know, and then, then would that be if you had more questions in between? Or is it something that we think we can discuss in a workshop?
I do know that the Airbnb is in committee and has two more committees to go through.
Would we be able to get the information, though, by next Wednesday?
Well, it's not, you've got to know what information you want. I mean, what you, because you're.
Fees would be a big factor.
Well, we, we, you're going to have to ask individuals to respond to you on a fee. So, but you can't ask them for a fee if you don't know what you're asking them to do. Nobody's going to give you a fee if you don't know what they're asking you, but just to say, oh, I go up and lobby on your effort, your behalf. That's why you have these. Take a look at these. I think you'll see some common things in here that would be expected, because it talks about what are the responsibilities of the lobbyist for the city? And what are the responsibilities of the city for the lobbyist? Look through these. Take the next week and go through these. If you want us to, if there's anybody in particular you want us to reach out to, let us know. We'll try to reach out to them. I mean, we, you know, we know that, like in Anna Maria, Chip Case is registered, but he only does Anna Maria, so it's a very small group he does for them. And I looked up, you know, David Ramba, who does, who does a lot of stuff around, but we didn't, were able to get out to them. Gray Robinson is our labor attorneys. So within their law group is a lobbying group. So, I mean, there's immediate access. There's probably lobbyists over Blalock-Walters, but that's not accessible to us. So, you know what I mean? But, but through Gray Robinson or that, there's, there's larger groups that are out there with folks that, I don't know who these people are. I mean, I don't know Dean Cannon, other than seeing his name as high up in the legislature several years ago.
He was Speaker of the House.
Yeah, he was Speaker. And Dunbar, I think, may have been years and years ago, I don't know. But you recognize the names. Corcoran, may not be him, you may see a wife, or whatever, but you see the names that are significant, were significant players in the legislature. And you look, look at that cover letter from Ballard, and you, and that really lays out how they work. It really lays out who they know, who they think their contacts are, not specifically by person, who's on their staff. I mean, their staff is a who's who, a former people at that level, and I think that's how they feel comfortable getting the access, is that they have people who were formerly part of the staff in Tallahassee. So just look at that. It's not trying to lead you one way or another, but the more information you can have about the way they operate, because otherwise, we're just listening to what some people said. Here's what's really going on with them.
And Mr. Mayor, what we could do is, we could have the workshop on Wednesday, and if we, A, get a level of comfort and get more information, particularly with fees, and B, should we decide that it is important, we can always, the workshop would be Wednesday, we could have a special meeting on Friday. I mean, it's, it's one of those things. Or we could wait until the next council meeting. I, I think that, I agree with Ms. Coker. I think it's important, particularly this year, that we have someone up there, and because we're entering into the contract at this point in time, it is a, whoever you choose, it's a contract for a year, so you have two legislative sessions for the price of one.
And they're probably already up there doing some of the things we want to do anyway, so we might be able to then put our names on it.
Well, individuals are, I'm sorry, companies like this, that are, some of them are located in Tallahassee, I can guarantee you, they have an office in Tallahassee, and they are up there year-round.
Okay, so we'll put it on the workshop for next Wednesday, ask questions if you get information, if you read something, find out before, reach out to Carl, and he'll.
Yeah, I think one of the things you're seeing is, I think the low level of way of, I think is closer to what you'd indicated last meeting before Mr. Flanagan was here. He came in with a 40 number. You're seeing the 60s, 70s, 80s for a year. That's what you're seeing in here, except for Jacksonville, which is basically a huge county with all their issues, and that's 120.
Right, but when, so that's Ballard Partners, for City of Jacksonville. My guess is they'd be willing to give us a smaller number.
Winter Haven is 60, if you look at those.
That's from Ballard, too?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so that was.
So you're, and Winter Gardens or whatever is in that 70, or 75 or 60, I'm not sure which, but they're in that range, then?
Remember, the, the city of Jacksonville is also, the city and the county are combined.
Right, right. That's why I say, it, it's a large figure, but it's a large job.
Manatee County is in the six, low 60s range for what they pay.
Mr. Sanders?
If we had a lobbyist today, what would we be asking them to do?
That's what we want people to come up with, for Wednesday, if there is.
On my, on my mind, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, me and Ms. Barnes.
On my mind, we have discussed the concerns about the Airbnbs and its effect on our neighborhoods and communities. Again, the three things that I initially brought up, thinking the Airbnbs, unfunded mandates that could be shoved down on us, Ms. Coker brought up stormwater as a concern. I also think, because of what's happening this year, there may be something coming down the pike up there that we don't know, that we don't know. And having somebody up there, and that could be part of the scope of work. If you are seeing legislation that's going to be detrimental to cities our sides, please let us know. Do you have, have some?
I do not. That's the reason I just don't see a need for it. But Airbnb is being addressed by, like, out on the islands, it's not a problem in my area, but I have heard it is a problem. But stormwater and unfunded mandates are being covered by Florida League of Cities, so I'm just not sure that we have something specific that we can justify spending that kind of money on.
Councilwoman Coker?
Well, I was just going to say that sometimes there can just be an amendment made in a committee meeting that could all of a sudden change everything, that could affect us directly, if you don't have someone on the ground to know right there. And to your point, I think that there are people that are representing the islands and representing other people on those issues, but we might have a different take on something. And I want someone that's working on our behalf, that's our voice, and that, that was my thought on it.
Anybody up there help us on some sidewalks?
Councilman.
You know what?
Well.
Yes.
Maybe, actually, maybe.
Councilman Roth, did you hear something?
Yeah, I did. So, right off the bat, I guess what I was saying earlier is, the, I think the Florida League of Cities is going to be at a real disadvantage this year because of the inability to crash the Capitol with, you know, 150, you know, local electives, because that, it's really, you know, the, so, so they're, they're very weak going into this. I have a, I know I'm going to be bringing forward a resolution from the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, that there is a, there's a bill being pushed through to eliminate planning councils by some unknown, brand-new senator up in the middle of the boon docks. So there's, you know, it's really questionable reasons on why that's happening and where it's coming from. We've got research being done on that, but we need to explain, I'll probably do need to explain to you what, what they do and why they benefit us, and why that particular one does benefits us a lot. But it's that type of stuff where these, these bad ideas come from nowhere with questionable reasons. And, you know, it's just, my, my experience with Tallahassee is, I don't get it. I just don't. The more time I spend up there, I don't understand why they do what they do, but really, we probably do need one this year, just because, you know, they don't, they do not have to abide by sunshine. They're allowed to have secret meetings. They, they do. And, and they do. And stuff comes out of it, and if you don't have someone on the ground watching, watching and telling us about it, we can't react. And next thing you know, bing, bang, boom, a law got signed into effect, and we're, we're at the short end of the stick, so, you know.
Mr. Roth, they aren't discussing Bradenton, though. They're discussing home rule and things that everybody at the 400-some-odd cities discuss that protect us.
You're right, they're, they're an equal opportunity offender. You're right.
Well, and, and let me ask you this, do they listen?
You know.
So far, they've never listened to any of the lobbyists that's been sent up there, quite frankly, unless they're.
I've seen, I've seen lobbyists earn their keep. I've been up there with, I've been up there as a person without a lobbyist, working with someone, a city that has a lobbyist, and I've seen the difference of me asking for something and someone with a lobbyist asking for something. And I've seen a whole different level of respect being shown to someone else.
But plus, I think when you look at lobbyists, we're probably, in some instances, we're on the short side of the lobbying effort, because there's heavy-duty lobbyists on the other side of the issue that they are listening to.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's, yeah. So there's lobbyists on both sides, hammering it.
My point, money buys the voice, and we are, we're just a small.
We, we are fortunate, you know, there's, there's various ways these things work, you know, just from what we see coming in here, from the administrator's office. We see the Florida, if it's a serious issue, Florida League will send out wanting your responses. How is this going to impact you? Please send us back. Then we become one of a lot, like you said, we become a lot of, but it is at least giving us the opportunity to express it. The other way it comes in is, if it's a bill that our legislators feel could have a direct impact on us, which the only success that I can look to in a lot of years was the CRA. Our legislators called me directly and said, Carl. Our, our legislators called me directly and said, Carl, what is go, how does this impact you? And I said, this is Miami, this is South Florida, and we're getting beat up for that. And he would send me all the language that was being proposed, and he goes, here's, here's what I'm gonna do, here's what I've got going on. We're gonna get it through committee, understand that. I've got the ear of the, who's bringing the sponsor. What do you need changed? And I said, we need to be able to spend CRA funds in accordance with state statute and not you guys sitting, and statute is a very broad description of how you can spend your funds, not the way they started lining them out individually. It says individually, and then the last sentence says, and in accordance with this, with the state, with the statute. We got that to stay in there. Jim Boyd did that as a legislator. He got that to stay in there. That was in direct contact with us. So it did work that time. This time, we had stuff come up on building, the time for your building inspections. They called me directly saying, are these a negative, are these gonna negatively impact you? And some of the disclosure requirements. I said, yes. I rented and raided on, on the disclosure requirement, saying, you guys continue, because it's so easy to write, you'll put this on the website. But if we can't put it on the website without other issues, it, it just seems so easy to say, do that, but if we can't. And it was gonna reduce some of the times and the fees on our permits. He took our suggestions. I, I, I received a call from both the senator and the legislator that are on that bill. So it works sometimes if your, if your local legislators are, are good and working for you. I mean, they may end up voting a certain way because of issues in Tallahassee. But sometimes, like, like Mr. Brown said, or like Mr. Roth said, or even Ms. Coker, if you can tweak a little bit of the bill that doesn't do much harm, then you're in a good position. That's really what we did with CRAs. We tweaked it enough that it didn't do harm to us when it was fixing to do a lot of harm.
A lot of times, that's done from an industry standpoint, not just individual companies, because we used to do it too in transportation. But we'd get together with Ryder and Piskin, all the other groups and, and do it, because we could throw more money at it and have a little more importance in lega, because, you know, they may say, Mayor Brown may say, hey, we're not gonna have semi trucks go through our city after 10 o'clock at night, and whoa, whoa, wait a minute, you know. How does that affect the industry? It affects us all, so we, we, you know, throw, and, and that's what I'm saying as a city, we use Florida League of Cities to protect us for home rule and unfunded mandates. I'm not sure that us putting a lobby there would have much effect on, on it. If we wanted to participate, that might be a different thing.
I think there's other, the other opportunity, other options which are big is if you are going after very particular legislation, if you look at these, they will show the amounts of dollars that went in earmarks to various municipalities. But the lobbyists are big in that, to say, how do you keep that in the budget? And how does it get past the turkey list with the governor? That is, that's primarily a lobbying effort at that point, because they've gotta be willing to tell Tax Watch to go stuff it, that they think it's important enough, and it's gotta be a lobbyist that, that this instance is probably gonna have that ability to get and talk to them in a way that we may not be able to.
Well, for example, CRAs, do we have our, the CRAs, the, the,
The FRA.
Do they have their own lobbyists separate from Florida?
Yes.
Okay, but, because that's a specific thing, and, and maybe we should be participating in that too, because that's a big thing, that, that every, almost every session, they try to, to get rid of that. And so it's just one day that if we don't have somebody there at the table, that they're gonna pull that plug and there goes that. So I understand the purpose of the, the lobbying. It's, it's good. But we do have people already there. Maybe we need to be joining the group versus just Braden, because they're, they're not gonna just pick on one little city. They're gonna do, they're gonna get, they get us, they get 400.
And it's really at the committee levels where these things get through. Once they get through the committee level, they're, they're hard pressed to, to break them at that point.
So pleasure of the council is, we'll talk about it at the workshop, get more, and if there's ideas, bring them with you. And Chief Evans?
I don't take any more time. But just, just my two cents, from a law enforcement perspective, and it, and it really does impact the city, because it talks about all kinds of things that could impact us financially, lots of things. We got, we got a ton of stuff going on this year in the legislature. I, I do think a lobbyist in certain circumstances can help. It can certainly help me. I, I got to a funeral yesterday an hour early, because I knew who was gonna be there and spent a half hour bending the ear of the Speaker of the House, Chris Sprouse, to talk to him about some of the initiatives going before the legislature. In our staff meeting last week, I told you some of the things, and we do work very closely. The Florida Police Chiefs Association works very closely with the League of Cities and finds out what they're looking at and, and what we're looking at. I actually proposed some legislation two years ago and tried to find a sponsor, and I couldn't. I personally am gonna, you know, come to you all and, and propose some other legislation. I don't wanna get into it today that has to do with public records. And so sometimes it, it does help us when we have that one voice. I know from, from my perspective, it, it helps when we have that one voice that can keep an eye on things and actually go get an ear with somebody, or at least get an appointment for me to get an ear with somebody. So I'm just throwing my two cents. We, there is so much law enforcement related, and I, I do think a lot of voices saying the same thing can, can help us, maybe not to the degree that you all are talking about, but on certain issues. I, I do, you know, I work closely with them all the time, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And just one last thing that I have, is I think that we heard, if you were on Pancakes and Politics with the chamber, our legislators are very supportive of Sadowski and some of the ship funds, but maybe, maybe one day, that one word that we say might turn something around for that and really help some of our housing, so. We'll, the, we'll discuss it at the workshop. All right, I don't think there's any unfinished or new business by department heads or anything that's not on the agenda. We'll go to unfinished business, anything?
No, sir.
Go champ. All right, council reports. We'll start in Ward Four.
Are you gonna address the, I thought you made a motion, you're gonna address sidewalks?
Oh, no, I said get with.
We had, we had workshop for several other things, none of it got.
Get with me on sidewalks. I've got a whole different thought process on sidewalks, and I was just mouthing that.
Abatement program?
Pardon?
Abatement program?
No, we, those things were things that we'll bring up in the future. The only thing on that workshop that was said to bring fo, the thought to bring forward was the organizational chart. Now, I've, we're putting together thoughts with the departments on those things. I've talked to Jim about sidewalks. That's why I'm saying, get with me on that, because
We'll talk about it the next workshop.
There's, there's some real ideas on how to get more bang for our buck there.
I have either.
All right. Councilwoman Coachman?
Um, Ward Five is alive. I can say that. Public Works is definitely in the works and doing all kinds of operations. I had the opportunity to talk to our, our director, and I'm really pleased at how things are going. I definitely have had, BPD, unfortunately, I had to call them for something that was going on on my street a few days ago, and one of the officers actually suggested something. And it's been something that we've talked about on my street a lot, and that is, we're missing some streetlights, because it's quite dark. So I'll be getting with, you know, our, our wonderful, wonderful Public Works Director. The only other thing that I have to say is this Sunday, I'm starting my first Zoom side chat as a council member. And initially, I'll just be doing kind of an induct, you know, introductory, you know, here I am, and here's some things the city does for you, but at some time in the future, I would like to have each one of you as a guest on one of my Zoom side chats and all the department heads as well. And just so that the community can get to really, really know us and see us.
Thank you. Councilwoman Coker?
Okay, one, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, we have to be noticed.
Have to be noticed.
Oh, okay.
And again, I've asked the staff, almost everything that's out there, please, and we're gonna, and we'll make sure as we go through it. Because if we go to a lot of meetings that I'm gonna go to, more than maybe in the past, with council people, we want to be noticed. And if somebody shows up, and Mr. Rudisell confirmed that, if two of us show up at a meeting and we're watching something go on, and we didn't know that both of us were gonna show up, if we don't speak or discuss anything, we're okay.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if, if we know in advance that, that there're gonna be more than one council person at a meeting, then it's good to include that in the notice that the council people may be present, but.
I know. I was gonna leave, so, but we didn't speak.
Generally, as long as you don't have, get into a back-and-forth discussion, it should be fine.
It was a county meeting, and, you know, I didn't know Mr. Sanders was gonna be there. He didn't know I was gonna be there, and we didn't comment or anything. We just sat there and listened, so.
Right.
All right, thank you.
No, I haven't done my report yet. I went to the Sarasota Bay Estuary Policy Board meeting, and I wanted to just kind of give you all a little overhead. Thank you for appointing me to that. It was, it was very informative. We have a, a new director down there. David Tomos, Tomoski is his name. And we had, it's a little sobering. They have been doing a, a big study on the bays, and the estuary, and estuary, actually, we contribute quite a bit to it, because of them, it's where the fresh water meets up with our ocean. So the Manatee River, we, it includes the Terasia Bay, Palmasola Bay, included with Sarasota Bay. So there's a report that's gonna come out that is gonna be bad news for all of us. The water quality has gone back, we are, because of the red tide that we had, we have gone backwards about 30 years. And that the quality is back where we were when they first started the Estuary Bay Program. And so luckily, there was legislation that was signed in 2020, and they've secured funding for the Estuary Bay Program for five years. And they're saying that every part of the water, of our water is impaired, the quality. And that the, one of the key indicators is the seagrass meadows. And so, there, there are a lot of, it's not just about throwing money at it. Some, some of it is just education. There are some wonder, they've got some great things going on. They have a, a website that I would strongly recommend. Everybody go take a, take a look at. It's called SarasotaBay.org. And they talk about some of the projects that they've already undergone, some that are in the, and we actually, Manatee County is doing a pretty good job, you know, with some of the things that they're doing compared to other areas. And there were some projects that are in the forefront at GT Bray that will help with stormwater management. And they have even things that can go down to individual homeowners with vertical oyster gardens. And I guess they're working with the Girl Scouts to put them together, and so go to that website, check things out. I think part of it is just changes in lifestyle. And there are a lot of things that, you know, we, we're still looking into. And so I just thank you for letting me be on the forefront of this, and I hope everybody will take an opportunity, go to that SarasotaBay.org and check out what they're doing.
All right, and I sat on that before on the council. And really was impressed with our city of Braden, because we always hit the numbers and do the, sometimes help the whole area bring the numbers down. So, you know, we've done a great job in our, with the Public Works and everybody for that, so. Now, that was a very, very good board to sit on.
And then one other thing, I got something, it'll give me a second to pull it up, but I just wanted to make an announcement that, that they are going to be doing that movie night this Friday night over at the, oh, gosh, I'm gonna, formerly known as the Manatee Performing Arts Center, but it's a free movie. They're celebrating Black History Month. Henry Lawrence is going to be doing a live performance beforehand, and then the movie is Remember the Titans. It's 6 o'clock. It's free of charge, and I just wanted to kind of put that out there.
Great event, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two items that I have of, of a personal nature. Because I didn't say it earlier, at our first meeting in February, my son Christopher had his 29th birthday on Groundhog Day. And some of you have, have, and some of the city staff have asked, because Chris and his wife, Alicia, live in Austin, Texas. So they did not lose power, but they did lose water. Let me brag for just a moment. One of the things that they did, my son is a chef, and he has his own food truck. And so they went out and were able to get there safely and started making warm food for people because so many people didn't have power. A couple of their suppliers came up and said, we want to help with this. So they set it up where they were to do it on a donation basis only. And, and the donations went to two of the local charities that are helping people in these tough times between COVID and freezing and, and that sort of thing. So I was very proud of them. They, they actually did it for two days and were able to give away over 200 meals to people in need. But they are doing fine, and thank you for your concern. The other thing is, today is my oldest son Matthew's 32nd birthday. The, the boy that first made me a mom. And I just want to say to both of our sons how very proud I am to be their mom.
Congratulations. And I was there when they were born, so. Across the street.
Okay, let's clarify that.
I know, I was like.
As a neighbor, as a good neighbor.
He was across the street. He was not in the delivery room.
I should've said, my family, my wife and I were there, so, as neighbors when you brought him home. We're a small town. Councilman Roth?
Please, move, move along.
Well, Ms. Coker, Councilwoman Coker, thank you for your report on the estuary. I gotta tell you, I've been wondering about the water quality, because I, I have a habit of going out at night and with my flashlight and looking at Where's Creek on the seawall. And I could normally, in the wintertime, is when the water's the clearest, and I can normally see down six, seven feet and look at fish, and I can't see two feet. So it's certainly, it's certainly so, red tide, yeah, that sounds, there's been something that's clouded up the water in a estuary, in a, in a, now, what should normally be, normally be very clear water at this time of year. It's not.
Well, Where's Creek is definitely one of the areas that, of a potential stormwater, you know, rebuilding the, the, I'm gonna butcher how to say it, but to work on setting up so that it can treat the stormwater as it goes out, because it's really the first few minutes. I, I learned all this at that meeting, but it's the, just the initial few minutes that has all the, the bad stuff. And if you can stop it, run it over the rocks or vegetation, they've got a whole plan. Then you can, the rest of the water's fine. It's just that initial flush.
It, it's, it's a very large drainage area. We learned that with the dredge project. Anyway, thank you on that. And I served on that board for, for several years and really enjoyed it. I got a letter from a resident concerning vaccines and wanting to know what we're doing, what we're doing about the county and the state vaccine program. And I informed her, we don't have a health department, and, you know, we're, we're pretty much, you know, we have no jurisdiction over that. And she didn't like that answer. So is there anything we can do to mandate our will upon the county health department and the state health department concerning vaccines?
Of course.
Cool. So what, what are we gonna do? Fine them? Unfunded mandates?
Hire lobbyists.
Okay, well, I just wanted to clear that up. I, I, I don't believe we have any authority to.
We have no authority to tell the county.
FYI, if you was listening to the county meeting yesterday, there are now up to 11,000 vaccines per week. So that should improve, you know, they, they developed a, a system where it's random, like, I'm in there, I'm still in there, and I applied almost two months ago. But my, it just gets, it's just like a, a, a power bar or whatever. You just shuffle everybody up and pull out the first 3,000 names, and you might've, you might've applied yesterday. You know, and somebody applied two months ago, so they didn't take it by date order, which is probably something they should've done. But there's some people going to Hillsborough and other counties north and south of us, getting them, and they're not calling in. They ask everybody to call in to take their name off, so that that bucket, it's about 150,000 people, so that bucket comes down narrower. So I would think that it will come, because a lot of people just go get the,
Anywhere.
The vaccine and don't call in, so there's, there's, there's a great percentage out there that's, that's, that won't show up when they get the call, so. It's, I think it should move faster.
Okay, how about I send this person over to you and you can?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm, can I get paid for this?
Okay. Um, and then, uh, lastly, I thought it was ironic that we had our, um, our affordable housing person come in and show us about this, uh, this wonderful project that's being done, um, with affordable cottage. It's called Bradenton cottages. And, uh, I remember approving this project. I remember, I remember being the board of, of elected officials that, that stuck our neck out and changed our comprehensive, we changed our land use regs to allow the density in on this. Um, and once again, I will always say the city of Bradenton is leading the pack with affordable housing, uh, with what we're trying to do. And I, I really, um, you know, would like to be recognized for that. I think there should be an appreciation day for the city of Bradenton's affordable housing program and all we're doing. And this is the best example brought in by sometimes our biggest critic. Um, so anyway, uh, yes, we, we should be very proud that we did this.
All right. Thank you. Um, and I really just, you know, I know Ms. Coker's talking about the Sarasota Bay, but I think that by what they have done and what through the cities and the counties that they work within, instead of being 30 years back, if we wouldn't have been where we were, we would be 100 years back. So I think that's been a great thing that, that they've done. And then again, city of Bradenton always leads it and with the results when I was on there reading through it. So it's a great thing. Um, the only thing that I'm going to bring up is something at the MPO meeting that they talked about the other day. Well, some of our, they, they say net zero, I think it is, where they want to go to zero fatalities and bike and ped and all that stuff, which again, we got to be realistic. But, um, most of you have heard me talk about red light cameras. Well, Lakeland is doing a pilot now with four cameras in Lakeland that are actually the cameras that I last brought up as a councilman was that they are a safety camera where if someone's going to run the red light, the other light doesn't turn green until the person clears the intersection. So, you know, in the past, it was always about fines and all of that. Well, you're still going to get a ticket for running a red light. Um, but you didn't kill somebody or hit a car because the car was still looking at a red light. Well, unfortunately, night before last, uh, my son witnessed it. And unfortunately, the person driving, not totally sure who ran the red light, but there was a fatality because of that. So, you know, again, most of you know up here, I've lost two friends to that. So I just want this council to maybe watch that, watch the Lakeland situation and see if there's a way we can add public safety to our lights without changing, you know, really behavior sometimes, it could work. So it's just something that, that I want us to watch for a while and see how that works. Cause if it works the way it's supposed to, it's going to start saving lives. And the NTSB now is starting to back that program because they've always been against it, but they're saying it's starting to save things. And that's what it's about. So, um, that's all I have. I really think, uh, it's been good discussion through the council and we'll go to department head reports. Sharon?
Sure. If you humor me for just a moment, I want to defend my department to a public comment that was made earlier. We do immediately respond to requests for documents. We've been known to respond on nights and weekends if the documents are available to us from our homes. Um, if not, certainly the next business day. I'm very proud of the staff that we do take this so seriously. And I just wanted to make sure that we cleared the record on that a little bit. Um, like I said, very proud of my folks for being very diligent. Um, with that said, we do have the workshop next Wednesday. We're going to want to get an agenda out today. So if we have agenda items, if we could get those to the department today, um, so we can take care of that.
We know the two are ready that we've talked about today. And then if anybody else has anything, and I think we had sidewalks discussion. We heard that that might want to be something. And I think you'll talk privately, but if anything needs to be put on for that.
Okay.
It's important.
Just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Uh, just to follow up on a, an item that was brought up at the workshop, want to make sure I have the correct direction from council as it relates to the decision request for additional pickleball courts. Is it the councils wish for us to proceed with adding an additional set of courts within the 17th Avenue Park?
What is the use of the tennis courts? Cause I know when we first, when we first did it, there was kickback over, we can't give up a tennis court. So we did. So do we know, do we know how many people are still using those tennis courts versus?
I do not have any information to.
But you can actually retrofit the tennis court.
Yeah.
To be used for both.
Right.
So it's a little bit different, but I don't think, I hope people wouldn't complain that the net may be an inch or two higher. And, and where I live, we have two pickleball courts and we have two tennis courts. And the tennis courts are actually lined for pickleball also. So it's a multi-use, which would, it's beneficial.
Okay.
At the workshop, I assumed that was, we didn't have to.
Right. He just wanted to.
I just, I walked away even not having a clear.
Clear. I, I thought.
That's fine. Then I will certainly.
Request for more pickleball.
Then we will take care of it.
And pickleball uses the same net as the.
No, I, I.
They said it's a little lower.
Yeah, but they've not been complaining about that.
Okay. So that's direction.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
We will take care of that. Um, also, uh, I think I've been copying you all on the emails related to the status on the signalization improvements at 27th Street East and 64. Uh, we finally have approval through DOT for that. So our folks are coordinating with them to get the equipment necessary for us to install. So as soon as we have a schedule for one that will occur, I'll be happy to share that with you all as well.
Is there going to be a right turn lane?
It's going to be a right turn on, um, allowed only when there is a left turn off of westbound 64. So it's a protected turn. There'll be no more U-turns allowed at the intersection. That way people in the, I, I was there watching it the other day and, um, easily five to eight cars can get through when that type, when that cycle is there. So hopefully that will help some, address some of the congestion at that location.
Right. But did you say there was or was not a, a, a turn lane on 27th turning on to Manatee?
Well, there's two, there's two lanes there now. One is, um, a, a right turn. And I'm not sure exactly if it's set up as a right turn straight and a left turn only. But our intent is to have it be a right turn protected with a light. But it'll only have, it'll have an arrow. It'll be a red or a green arrow that will allow them to turn.
And let that be known. That's the fastest DOT approval we've ever had.
And, and it probably would have been faster if I'd have sent another email asking where the status was because apparently it got left on somebody's desk. So. That's all.
Thank you. Chief? Scott?
I don't have anything.
All right. Chief?
There's still a red light camera sign there, by the way.
That's okay.
It's not enforced, is it?
There's no.
Not on public.
But Waze warned you about it. So that's not a bad thing.
So can I turn right on red? You aren't going to answer.
We'll talk about that offline.
Talk about that later.
In your golf cart?
In my golf cart.
Just real quick, I always try to, uh, share some positive, um, stories for council meeting. The sad thing is, um, obviously, uh, about a dozen of us attended the funeral yesterday of the Pinellas deputy that was killed in line of duty. It was their first line of duty death in over a hundred years. Um, but, uh, I thought we represented quite well. And, um, it was a long day. That was a seven hour day for me and a 10 hour day for the rest of my folks as they proceeded onto the procession. Um, anyway, knock on wood, um, we've had a, a really good streak here and hopefully we continue it. I know you all have been receiving probably higher than normal, um, watch commander reports. You'll note that my folks have been in some pretty dangerous situations as of late. Uh, really has accentuated though, some of the de-escalation training that we're continuously going through. I think you all got the one where the, the guy was breaking into somebody's car, um, and then broken through their back glass door. They barricaded themselves in the bedroom and then we confronted him in the house and he met us with a, um, knife sharpener, not a knife, a knife sharpener. And, um, you know, luckily my officers saw that for what it was and were able to successfully de-escalate it. You know, just a few weeks ago, we had an incident involving a woman with a gun. Um, one of my officers gave chase and as she turned with a gun in her hand, she threw it. Um, that could have ended far, far differently. And I just applaud the work of my, my training staff and, and really just the caliber of, of folks we have and what we do to try to continue training them. And just to make sure, I think, I'm always afraid to say, I think I've caught a little cold because you never know right now if it's a cold or what. But I think I just have a little cold I got last night. Um, or allergies. Yeah. Um, just to let you know that your, um, money that I know we were getting it for a while from the CDBG and, uh, it switched over to our budget, the $10,000. Um, two weeks ago, we, we were actually able to, to find the family that had been out homeless for, for several weeks out on the street with some young kids and find, um, some housing for them and, and work very closely with them and, and get one of the, um, parents involved in a, in a job. Took a couple, a couple thousand dollars. But just to reinforce for you, when the budget session comes up that that's money that, um, I think Councilman Roth, you were the one who said, you know, we need to make sure that you keep getting this money, even if we're going to lose it from there, that, uh, we make sure that we spend that money well. And, and each and every instance, it does something really significantly to, to help get a family off the street and not just off the street, but return into a, a position where, um, what we're hoping to accomplish with that. So thanks for that. And, and there are some good stories out there surrounding that. And that's all I have.
Another question?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Since you won't be here for our CRA portion of the meeting, can you tell us a little bit about community policing that, that, that we've approved through that, uh, CRAs?
And so, um, and I, I think, um, Katerina will probably be able to talk a little bit. I know that she's participated. She's, as far as I'm concerned, hit the ground running. Um, I, I think we at the police department see her as a very, very valuable asset to us. She's taken the time to go out and ride with, um, some of my personnel to get a firsthand look as to what is going on in the CRAs. And, um, seems like she has a lot of great ideas and, and we're working together. Um, we're now providing her with weekly reports, um, with stats, um, with the projects that my officers are participating in on a weekly basis. And, um, as I have communicated to her, we're willing to tailor that to, to her needs. We're really just a offshoot of what we can do. I think it's working out great. What we've done is, um, we, we have the three officers that are funded through the CRAs and they're each, um, assigned to those specific CRAs. But then we also have, and he's sitting in the back of the room, an overall city, um, community service officer. And he takes care of the areas that aren't covered under the, uh, CRAs. It's very project oriented. Um, I've tasked them every week with identifying quality of life issues in their area and letting me know each week what they're doing to try to resolve it and what resources they need. And, um, I, I personally think again, that her, um, her assistance on all this is gonna, it, it really is already showing that it's going to be a, a, a great relationship and we can get some good things done.
Do you have a one or two?
We have, we have three.
Three. And then I thought there was two more.
Should be five total.
Should be five.
Well, three and then I called downtown something different. So I just called that my downtown folks. So yes.
So you got one dedicated to downtown?
Um, we actually have two.
Two?
Originally, they, they've always been there.
Right. Yes. Yeah. Those, they've been there. So I thought you were talking about the new, kind of the new cops grant. That's what I thought you were referring to.
What, what about high crime areas, uh, you know, past, are those, just from my information, I know, uh, there's councilmen that, that council people that, um, have an interest is, is do we, how do we allocate, uh, do, do we base our, our, our policing on crimes or, or is it just equal?
So that's probably a longer discussion.
Well.
But we, we try to, you know, what I don't want to say is because areas in our city, um, who aren't experiencing a lot of crime shouldn't have, you know, officers available and, and patrolling that area or that pendulum may shift. What we try to do, um, we do pay, we do, um, assign by call volume. We also assign by time of day, time of night. Um, we have set shifts, but how many people we have on those shifts vary. And, um, so I think more to answer your question, let's say that in a particular area, we're getting a rash of vehicle burglaries. Um, what I'll do is not necessarily from my patrol side, but from my patrol support side is I will move detectives out of their offices, out of their desk, um, out into the street to, to get a handle on that. Um, we do have resources, even with my CRAs, we all work together. If one of them is experiencing an issue in their area, we share the wealth. The other ones go over there and, and try to help step up patrols, step up FIRs in the area, um, that kind of thing so that we saturate areas. We, we do believe in, in saturation policing, making sure that we're visible, we're out there. Um, and so I think that that helps.
I had a couple of residents that, that's contacted me and, and asked if, if there could be more patrol in selected areas based on crime activity or, or whatever. And I said, I don't know.
Well, I always encourage everybody and, and you please, if, if you get those calls, you call me personally, let me know. Send me emails. Um, I try to be very responsive if somebody calls and say, hey, we're noticing this, we're seeing this. Uh, we're going to look into it. We're going to send people there. We're going to investigate it. We're going to see what we can do to, um, to help alleviate any concerns. Um, I can pull, see if we've stopped people in the area. Um, remember we also, we started when I got here, the, the walking the beat. I know Councilman Coachman's familiar with that. I, I strongly believe in foot patrol, getting out, um, not just talking to bad guys or suspicious guys, but talking to neighbors, people sitting out in their front yards and saying, hey, what can we do? And, and if you're getting particular areas where that's happening, that's a great place for me to call my assistant chief and say, hey, have the captain assign some folks. I want 10 walking the beats over the next seven days in this area.
So is there any chance for like mobile, uh, units in the future? Or like a, like a, well, I don't know what I'm, what I'm asking for, but that, you know, that there'd be a mobile, um, uh, like a mini station or something in a, in a particular area?
Well, remember we also have our, um, armored surveillance vehicle.
Right.
And people love seeing that. If I get a request for it, it, it'll show up. Um, I usually wait till a neighborhood wants it there because some neighborhoods don't want it there. Um, so I, I'm more than happy if, again, if you want to get with me, let me know what yours is.
I'll make that suggestion and ask them to get with you that, that, because I just don't know the answer, but that's the reason I'm asking.
Okay. Yes, absolutely. We, we have all kinds of things that, that we can employ to, um, you know, sometimes it's.
Like I know you parked a squad car there beside where the homeless camp was. And I don't know if that helped or not, but, uh, caught my attention.
We, we do have some, some cars that are in, at end of life. And instead of sending them to the, uh, to the yard, we think it's better to, to move them around the area.
That's a good idea.
They do help quite a bit. We just got to make sure that they move once we park it there. Cause sometimes they're pretty end of life.
Yeah, they will move. Right.
I, I've been doing some ride alongs and I've realized that some of our cars are really end of life, you know? And these, uh, these young officers, they, they love driving in a police car and they keep it clean. But I'm like, how many miles is this amount on it? But anyway.
Chief, I want to say this. Um, um, I had a family member that's here visiting and there was an incident on my street, uh, the other night. And the gentleman was quite agitated. I couldn't get him to calm down. And that was the reason why we called. And my, um, I'll say it was my son. He, and he observed the professionalism of your officers, even where this gentleman was quite irate and, and how they de-escalated it and how they spoke to everyone involved. Just, he, my son was blown away because he said, it's too bad. We didn't have that filmed so that he can show.
We did?
Oh, yeah.
I'll bet.
We did, didn't we?
We probably did.
Maybe that's a good.
That's true. Well, I think, you know.
Training tool.
It, it, he was just blown away. Cause he was saying, you know, you always hear about how officers are, you know, a little over the top with people. But in that situation, and I don't think it was just because I was standing there. I think that's how they roll. I just want to say thanks.
Well, thank you. I, we appreciate that. And, um, we'll be coming out soon. We're doing the final touches on our annual report. I know it's a little bit late, but we just want to make sure that our ADA compliance associated with it is, is good. But you'll see in there, we, uh, we report everything. I make sure that we list all the complaints that have come in.
See the red lights going. Yeah.
Yeah. The use of force, everything. And I think you'll see that our complaints are down. down, that it's, you know, last year was a good year. I think you'll be pleased when you see the data surrounding that.
Councilman Roth?
Yeah. Recently, I, I attended the Zoom meeting from Kennedy Smith. I know several council people were there, and there was a, a commercial investor owner that was criticizing the city for homelessness, which, you know, I know we're doing, we try to do whatever we can. It's really, it's a tough, it's a tough topic because of the, you know, civil rights and issues on what we can do, but I just wanted to share, you and I have been talking about things that we could...
And we've reached out to, what was it, well, I know, we've reached out to him, and I'm, I don't know if he has the answers, but I'm waiting for the answers on that.
Chronic, you know, I mean, just, I just wanted to say that other people heard him say that, and, and, you know, I just wanted to, to point out that we're, this is something that we're constantly doing, we've been doing, we've been working on it. I shared with you that I, the 2006, I helped initiate the camping ordinance, which we can possibly tweak, or we're looking into. But anyway, I just wanted to share that you and I have been having conversations on anything we might be able to do going forward, that just in case there's anyone out there that thinks we're, the city has given up on homelessness, that's not the case at all, and we're trying to be compassionate, yet dealing with the people that might possibly be doing wrong while being homeless.
Yes, and, and we have been speaking, and I actually shared with you, and I don't want to discuss it any further, but we did go back and readdress the, the ordinance issue that we discussed very quickly during workshop, and we've resolved that mostly. We've resolved that mostly, and so that, that kind of work...
How was the signage, or...
Um, just the, the part about some of the ordinances, the enforcement of them. We're, we're back to being able to, to do some enforcement on some ordinances within the city, and we can talk about that later. But yes, thank you. You and I have been chatting quite a bit, and we really are doing quite a bit out there, quite a bit, and, and that's kind of what I wanted to share about that, that family. It's not only enforcement, but we have a very compassionate side as well, and I want to make sure everybody understands that it's, you know, it's a balance, but we, I think we balance it very well, and thanks for your support with that.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Callahan?
Got one thing today that we've been waiting for, for a little while. Just to preface what it is, I gave one to Mr., to a lady before he left. We'd said we'd be getting out the surplus property list, so that what I want to do is I want to give it to you ahead of time, so that you have a chance to start looking at. There's a lot of properties in here that are not going to be surplus. What I did is took Jesus's list, and he just went down the list saying, okay, could it even potentially be surplus, and put it on, when we know some of these things have a use that we intend on using them for. But I'm going to distribute this to you, take a look at it, because we do have the requirement to still have a public hearing on it. But it doesn't mean you can't start taking a look and see what's there. You can get with me, and we can talk about why a particular property in here, although it looks vacant, have we committed it to somebody already, what else are we, we going to do? Just a reminder to those three cottages, we hope those three cottagers are seven, because that's what the commitment was. We also made a commitment to that same builder that if, if he could prove that he could do this, he still had an option on the other two lots that are there, to make this not three houses, and not just seven houses, but potentially probably 20 or 25 of those small, nice cottages. So that was what we'd committed to Bill Myers and Bill Isley to try to be able to do. It was getting a little suspect, because those weren't moving along. They sat out there with nothing going on with them, and we were starting to wonder what was happening. So I think, since he is probably more self-funded than most folks doing this, that I think he's got to build and, and then roll the money into the, the next one, and I think that's probably the holdup on the, the next four. If he can get one or two of these sold, he can progress through the first seven and get those taken care of.
Well, I also think there's a possibility that we're working with the school district to get some of their fees, impact fees waived.
Yeah. We agreed to take care of a lot of things for him, but we couldn't help him with, with that, because we couldn't prove that there were houses there after 2002. That's the big issue with the school impact fees. It's not that something was demoed, but you have to be able to demonstrate that it was demoed after 2002 to get the automatic exemption from school impact fees, so.
But there is some flavor in the school system.
To do for affordable housing, there absolutely does appear to be. So let me distribute these to you, so you can start taking a look at them. I have the whole long list of all of our properties. It has the same pictures, but these were the ones that were marked in that, in that summary schedule that said could potentially work for affordable housing. This does not include CRAs, because that is not part of the statutory requirement, and we already did try to surplus some CRA properties, and we continue to work with Habitat and anyone else that has come forward to try to do those affordable housing within the CRA. So let me give this to everybody. And our intent is to bring that back up and meet our requirements for the surplus property. Just a reminder, I think in here is a copy of the statute. Please read that, so that there is no confusion about what you may do versus what you have to do. Big distinction, what you may do, you may sell it and call it surplus. You can call it surplus, and then you may sell it. And if you do sell it after it's been named surplus or affordable, then you need to use those funds in a very particular way. So not a problem with that, just make sure that when somebody steps up here from the audience and tells you, you have to do this, you're very aware of the statute that says what are within your rights. You, you can do whatever you, you feel is best towards affordable housing, so. So we'll bring that forward.
That house that Glenn mentioned, he's not here, which maybe is a good thing to mention it, because a tear down beside the church or whatever.
Yes.
Is that, where were you at?
Yes, matter of fact, I was going to meet with Scott today. We can do it right now. Scott, I need for you to write up the best indemnity agreement you can for us, okay? We are going to proceed with demoing it. Councilman Coachman, Councilman Coachman, talk to the owners, which was our desire, not to talk to Glenn, not to talk to the church, talk to the owners and find out exactly what they want to do. They are fine with tearing it down. I want one more conversation with them once we have this type of indemnification, to the extent we can get it, that doesn't hold us long. They understand they're tearing it down, they understand there's going to be a lien on the property, those kind of things, that they are then signing before we tear it down. There's a very good understanding, this is what's going to happen. That's what we're always afraid of, is that, oh, I didn't want that torn down, oh, I didn't know it was going to be a lien on it, I didn't know what that meant. I think they understand that, but we want to make sure one last time, and then we'll take it down.
So what will be the purpose after it's torn down? Will that be...
Be up to, it'll be up to the owners to decide how they want to use it.
The owners, and we won't have any say because of the lien?
Nope.
I mean, if it's starting to grow up and be just as big a problem as it was with the house there, then it...
It's still the owners.
We've done this before.
It shouldn't be that. It's, it's, it's a lot more of a hard surface over there, the house and probably the fence line are the biggest issues. Once that comes down, we got to make sure that it's not on slab, so that's a good sign. But they completely clear the lot. Sometimes you get...
Foundations.
They, yeah, and everything's left, and you're got just as big a mess. We want to make sure that our contract is exactly what's going to come out and that it is cleared, so.
So are there any restrictions on what happens to it afterwards?
Nope. No, only it has that lien on it, so if you try to sell it, I mean, that's part of the process. You probably won't see much money from it, so errors or even that. When they go to sell it...
If.
If, you know, in the future, I mean, next 20 years.
Yeah.
If you go to sell it, and it's worth $20,000, and we have a $16,000 lien, they're going to net $14,000 on it. That's what I want to make sure everybody understands. It's not a lien that goes away over time like our CDBG liens us. This stays there in its entirety, so. But we're going to move forward and, and get that taken care of. We, we finally reached the agreement, thanks to this Coachman, to make sure that the owner really understood. We had third parties pushing this around, and they may enter into some sort of agreement with the church or whatever else, but that's going to be between the owners in the future, not us.
So would it be fair to say that this is not a normal practice, that we don't want to start tearing down houses and leaning them just because, you know...
It creates heartburn later on, so we don't want to necessarily do that. You know, sometimes people just don't have the money to get it down. If they don't, then, and it's that bad a shape, I mean, I, it's probably debatable as whether it can fence up. Unfortunately, because of the age of the house, and it's not on slab, most of our funding's not available to fix it up. That's, that's the sad part. We checked with our housing folks and said, is there an opportunity to, to fix it up? But unfortunately, there doesn't appear to be in this, just by the nature of the age of the house and the type of it that it is, so. So, yeah, we are, we are still moving forward with that. But I do need something, and I know Scott will tell us, there is nothing foolproof about it, but it's what can we do to the best of our abilities to make sure everybody is aware and that it is at least documented. So that's all, that's all I have, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the organization? All right, seeing none, will be adjourned.